Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, August 20th Board of County Commissioners meeting, and with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and just ask that you take a moment of silence. Commissioner Pritchett?
Do you join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item D, we have minutes for approval.
Make a motion to for a minute.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item E, Commissioner Tabia? I don't know if you wanted to introduce this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will be having a presentation by Senator Mayfield's office. Her office will show all of the wonderful things that they've done for Brevard County at the state level, Madam Chair.
Come on up.
This is not Senator Mayfield. My name is Representative Renee Plensia. I'm a member of the Florida House Representatives in District 50, and I serve North Brevard County and portions of Orange County as well. And this is Madeline, my daughter. And we are honored to be here. We wish Senator Mayfield could be here with us, but we know she has some family matters that she has to attend to right now in their family. But as you, as some of you well know, the legislative process can be very difficult, and making sure we get the right appropriations and the right money back to our, our local county and municipalities is very important as part of the job that we do. Appropriations are put in by both the House and the Senate. We have to work on them together. But I tell you, it's amazing to have a partner in the Senate like Senator Mayfield, and it is amazing to have a partner like Senator Wright as well, who also serves in Brevard County. This year, one of the appropriations we were able to get in was $500,000 towards the EOC, which we knew was desperately needed for our county, for the safety of our county and for the safety of the people who come here to our county to enjoy our beaches and our flourishing aerospace industry. So I want to thank you guys for the job that you do in helping us identify what we need to do to make sure that we work together for the betterment of the people that we serve here in Brevard County. So today, we'll be presenting a check myself on behalf of, of my office and Senator Mayfield's
We have a great group of representatives, but I want to give a shout out to Coach P
office to Brevard County and the Brevard County Commission.
and Mr. Wright. It has just been a delight getting to work with you and, and communicating with, with
So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want us to come down?
my office and myself. You guys are off the charts. I just want to throw that out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess Commissioner Tabia has a resolution you'd like to read? Would that be better?
I've, I've got a couple of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
First one, though, is recognizing Senator Debbie Mayfield with, okay.
Let's all go down, please.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, recognizing Senator Debbie Mayfield. Whereas Senator Debbie Mayfield represents a large portion of Brevard County citizens in her capacity as Senator for the 17th District, and whereas Senator Mayfield has been a leader in ensuring access to quality education, including supporting local colleges, personal one there. Whereas Senator Debbie Mayfield has worked to eradicate the scourge of anti-Semitism from schools, and whereas Senator Mayfield serves as Chair of the Appropriations Subcommittee on Agriculture, Environment, and General Government, and whereas Senator Mayfield has been a partner to Brevard County Government in making every effort to ensure its priorities, and whereas Senator Mayfield has strived to protect the environment of Brevard County, and whereas Senator Mayfield has improved patient safety by ensuring medical practitioners maintain adequate education, and whereas Senator Mayfield is acutely aware of the advocate for transportation safety in Brevard County, and whereas Senator Mayfield has supported efforts to improve the state and federal process regulating, relating to disaster recovery, and whereas Senator Mayfield is deserving of recognition for a continued effort on behalf of and in partnership with Brevard County Government. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County that Senator Debbie Mayfield is recognized for her service and dedication to the people of Brevard County and her continued partnership with Brevard County Government. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 20th day of August 2019. Make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can we get someone?
Is someone going to accept it?
And thank you for stopping when we were doing the photos. I was starting to get distracted.
Hi, sorry. My name's Adrienne. I'm with Senator Mayfield's office. Thank you all so much for your support. We really appreciate it. We really enjoy working with the county, and you all have amazing staff as well that are really working towards some amazing initiatives to make our community stronger. And then also Representative Saroy is here. He has two additional projects that are awarded to the county that he'd like to present.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Tyler Saroy, Merritt Island. My honor to represent the 51st District in the Florida House of Representatives. We have two appropriations, very privileged to work with Senator Mayfield on this past session, two, two projects that we were able to bring home that I'd like to share with you this morning. The first is half a million dollars for septic-to-sewer conversions that we did in partnership with the Board of County Commissioners. Those dollars, we were able to secure and bring home for some of the most at-risk areas on Merritt Island in terms of nutrient load entering the lagoon. The second project that we were able to accomplish with Senator Wright's assistance as well was an additional half a million dollars for a Brevard County offender reentry portal. This project will work with elements of our judicial system to make sure that offenders who are coming out of incarceration have tools and resources available to them to prepare them to reenter and to be productive and contributing members of society again, ending that, that circle of recidivism that we're all familiar with. So really, really pleased to be able to bring home these two projects and look forward to next session and seeing what we can achieve together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
Just real briefly, I wanted to extend an offer out there. If you need any help as far as the reentry program's concerned, you know, let me know. Obviously, you're aware of my background, and the chair was kind enough to put me on the Public Safety Coordinating Committee. So if there's something that we can do at the local level to help implement the local program, certainly let me know, and I'd be happy to help you.
Great.
Mad, mad comment, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Loeb. I appreciate that, and you know, you do have a vast knowledge of our judicial system, and one of the things that the legislature has expressed an interest in that I think will continue over future years is what we can do in the way of introducing new efficiencies into our, into our system of justice and how we can best serve the folks that are coming through the system. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Tabia?
Do you have one more picture?
Yeah.
Staff from the projects.
You want to get a picture?
Another one?
I don't want to, but do you want to get another picture?
It's your initiative, so you have to too.
You don't want to. You want us to stay here?
It's a million dollars.
He has rather camera shy.
Is Virginia here?
Virginia Barbour?
Yeah.
Right. One. Oops, sorry. All right. One more. Thank you. Great.
You know what? While we got everybody down, we'll, oh, we did go. Okay.
Yes. Yes. Of course.
Good morning. Senator Tom Wright from District 14. I'm here on behalf of Debbie Mayfield. I want to, want you all to know, if you don't know, Debbie's husband was involved in a very serious automobile accident a little over two weeks ago.
Senator, you gotta go on the mic. I'm so sorry. Those are the rules.
Okay, no problem.
You can put it away.
So, how's that?
That's better.
So I just want you to know, because some people were wondering why she wasn't here, but she's, she's tending to him as she should be doing. She asked me to come in her place. She wishes she could be here in the worst way. Also, want to just share with you a little bit about the process, because not everybody understands how these checks get here, and it's not a matter of representatives and senators just sitting up there going, yeah, I'll take a check for that, and take a check for that. We had a $91.1 billion budget this year in the state of Florida, $91.1 billion. And people like Senator, or Representative Saroy, and Representative Plensia, and Debbie Mayfield, and people like myself, we all put in our requests for our respective communities, our respective counties that we're responsible for. And let me tell you, about 18% of all the requests make it to the finish line. So when you see checks like you see here today, that took a lot of work, a lot of concentration, a lot of effort to make sure that check got here, and that's because of the people that represent you, and I want you to just know about that. This is my first time in, in a political situation, and I, as a taxpayer all my life and a citizen, I thought, this is a piece of cake. We'll just say we need half a million dollars, they get you a check. It doesn't work that way. And what really happens is, is you put in all of what we call "ass," and then they say, how important is it to you? And they're all important. Well, now you get to choose five. Wow. Then you get to choose two out of the five. Then you get to choose one. It's like, wait a minute. And that's when the battle begins. And it's a, it's a, it's a good battle. We all get along famously up there, whether Republicans or Democrats, we get along great. But we do have to say, look, this is the reason why this money is so important for my particular part of the state. And I'm so happy to see that we've got septic-to-sewer, because that's probably 65% of the reason we have the issues that we do with the Indian River Lagoon. And we've had a lot of documentation and proof of that, so that's very important, that we can make that happen. And of course, the other things, like your emergency EOC. In the world we live in, we can't live without EOCs. We need to have them. And the, and the portal, so it's all positive. So I appreciate you listening to me. I'm here on behalf of Debbie Mayfield, who I have the greatest respect for. She's been a wonderful mentor to me. She helps me out as a brand-new senator. I go to her sometimes and say, what should I do? She takes the time to help me. So you have a great representative senator in Debbie Mayfield. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you. Commissioner Tabia?
Brevard County is very lucky to have a, a strong delegation up in Brevard County, and Representative Tyler Saroy is certainly no exception to that. I have a resolution commending his work on behalf of the citizens of Brevard County. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, recognizing Representative Tyler Saroy. Whereas the Honorable Tyler Saroy serves Brevard as District 51 Representative in the Florida House, and whereas Representative Saroy serves on both the Agricultural and National Resources Subcommittee and the Agricultural and National Resources Appropriations Subcommittee, and whereas Representative Tyler Saroy has been a longtime proponent of the health of the Indian River Lagoon, and whereas he has worked tirelessly in Tallahassee to cure funding and support for our most precious resource, and whereas Representative Saroy continues to also find ways at a local level to bring in additional resources to aid in the recovery of the Indian River Lagoon, and whereas the Indian River Lagoon is an extra area of critical importance to the local, regional, national ecology, and whereas the Indian River Lagoon is still suffering from frequent algae blooms as well as multiple fish kills, and whereas pollution of the Indian River Lagoon has been a major contributor to the loss of more than 60% of seagrass beds, and whereas the lagoon is still in need of further monetary assistance to fund projects critical to healing the lagoon, and whereas these funds will be critical to the restoration of the Indian River Lagoon. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does let it be known it supports Representative Tyler Saroy and his advocacy of the Indian River Lagoon. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session on this 20th day of August 2019. Make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Smith, and I also have a, a card on this before we vote, and Commissioner Loeb would like to speak. That's all right?
It's your show, Madam Chair.
Wayne?
Seemed like not.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Loeb?
No, the, the only thing, and I'm, I'm happy to support this, but the, the only caveat, and I, this doesn't mean as a slight toward anyone, I appreciate the work that our delegation has done, but I, I just want to make clear that, that my supporting this does not in any way reflect support for the, the proposed tax at the port. Obviously, Port Canaveral is part of District 2. It's an integral part of District 2. I think that portion is certainly a polarizing issue where I'm on one side, other folks may be on another, and I am happy with the work that the representative has done with respect to the lagoon. However, with respect to that, that one item, I just want to clarify that my supporting this is not implicit or explicit support of, of the proposal with respect to the port tax.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would agree with the same, but I noticed the resolution didn't have that specifically in there, so again, I appreciate all the hard work that all of the delegation does for us. You know, we often, like you said, I'm, I'm so glad that you brought that up, Senator, because oftentimes, people don't see what goes on up there. They just read bits of the paper, they read, you know, the drama that, that comes from Tallahassee. So thank you so much for the work that you do.
Yeah, and we're not always going to agree with everything. I think you voted on the wrong side of the Whiskies and Wheaties bill. I, I want to be able to get whiskey at the same place I get my Wheaties, but you know, if that's the worst thing I can say about you, then I think you've done a great service for the citizens of Brevard County, and I greatly appreciate your advocacy, your innovative ideas, and I look forward to the continued partnership with not only you, but the entire delegation, because this is not a Brevard County issue. This is a statewide issue of, and potentially of national importance. So thank you so much. If you certainly want to come up here and, and lend any comment, we'd greatly appreciate it. Or justify your Whiskey and Wheaties bill. Do you want to talk about that one?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I, I actually may need to revisit my position on that, because I find myself wishing I had some whiskey and Wheaties right now. I skipped breakfast this morning. You know, I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here this morning and to, to speak briefly. I won't take up too much of your time, because I know you have much more to get to on your lengthy agenda, but I do appreciate the invitation, and I, I'm grateful for the resolution of support. What I proposed a month ago really was to initiate a discussion within our county about how we may best proceed in terms of identifying new partnerships and new resources for the lagoon. When I was sitting up in committee in Tallahassee, one of the things that became obvious to me immediately is that our lagoon is competing with the Kalusahatchee, the Everglades, Lake Okachobee, Our Springs, the St. Johns, and all of these different rivers and watersheds around the state that are encountering the same kinds of issues with water quality that we have. So I threw an idea out there, a way, a way for us to get started, and I'm pleased to report to this board that my communications and discussions with port stakeholders continue to evolve, and I think that we will be able to meet a compromise. After spending 10 months knocking on doors in my district, I believe there's a desire to see Port Canaveral do more to help with our Indian River Lagoon. Others feel differently. That's fine. That's part of the process. That's how we do business in the arena. But to be clear, and, and I think that we have to be unambiguous in terms of our facts and terminology, because we shouldn't, we shouldn't mislead, we shouldn't create a red herring or, or distract people. Only the five commissioners pursuant to their port charter, only the five elected commissioners that are members of the Canaveral Port Authority have the ability to raise taxes. It's not me, it's not you, it's not the legislature. Only they have the ability to do that. So we're going to continue to have the discussion. It, it may be fruitful, it may not, but I believe, standing here before you today, that it is a discussion worthy of our attention and worthy of having. So I look forward to continuing that, and I thank you very much for the invitation to come out today. And the last thing I'll, I'll say is thank you to you, Madam Chair, and to this board for the tremendous leadership that you have shown in terms of our lagoon and prioritizing and, and getting the job done. So very much enjoy partnering with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Loeb?
Just briefly, I, I know that Admiral Justice had put in a card earlier and ceded his time, but given that the port was a topic of discussion, I would just ask, in fairness, if we can give him a few moments?
That's fine. I mean...
Good morning. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. Wayne Justice, Royal Coast Guard, retired, Port County Commissioner. I'm a, excuse me, Port Commissioner. I'm up here as myself, single Commissioner. We have not had this issue in front of us to talk amongst, we have not had this as, as, as our board at a meeting, and so personally, I just want to make the point, recognize again that we elected people from, Commissioners from the Port District, which is, you know, half of this county, north half of this county, run at large, we have hundreds of thousands of people that we represent. They put us in a job to, to do what we do. What we do up there, of course, is we get revenues, we reinvest those revenues into the infrastructure, and that creates jobs. Those jobs create more revenue, and, and the cycle continues. Works pretty well. Your TDC told us this last week that they, they, just on the cruise passengers alone that drive into this county to co-own our ships, generate over $1.2 million of lagoon tax money. Okay? That's just, just from our cruise passengers, let alone the two, other 200 businesses that work at the port. All pay sales taxes, all part of it. I would submit that our, our policies and our, our way forward are keeping with the spirit of, of moving, of supporting the lagoon. I also want to highlight our environmental, environmental stewardship that we have at the port. I would, I would put that against any municipality or any, any entity in this county or even in this region. We, zero of our drainage, of our, of our stormwater goes into that lagoon. It all goes out to the ocean treated. We have environmental processes, we have environmental policies up there that are second to none in this state from a, from a port perspective. We get rated port-wise, all the, all the ports get rated up there. We really do quite a job, and we, we take it very seriously. Our environmental stewardship's a piece to it, and I, I don't want it, I, I just, I don't like, I don't want it to be, this argument or this discussion to be characterized that we're just sitting up there, you know, putting money in our pockets, because that's not what's happening. And I think, I think, I think we know that. So appreciate the time. Thank you very much. I'm just going to close it. When someone comes in to your elected stewardship and tries to redirect your reven, your revenues, I, I don't know what, I mean, I, I guess we can't use the tax word, but it seems like a tax to me, and, and we're certainly then, we have to pay our bills. We don't have revenues to pay our bills, and that gets passed on down to our, our constituents. We're not trying to get into that cycle. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. You want to go ahead? You're not lit up.
Yeah, leave it to me to have a resolution that has speakers. In conference.
Well, it's still better, anything is better than the beauty queen resolution.
I still, still love that one. Again, thank you so much, Representative Saroy. You know, I'm sorry, folks are coming out, but I guess you, as me, saw the tens of thousands of dollars that was spent on chameleon paint for restoration or Tranquility Tower, or whatever it is, and thought there could be better resources than fancy paint jobs on towers that are very rarely are ever used. So I, I do appreciate you doing that.
We need to vote on it.
And just, just for everyone's edification, I am going to be supporting this with the caveats noted.
Yeah.
Vote on it?
Yeah.
We get vote on?
No, we, okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That's what I would call it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to call the Duda folks up.
That's not a Duda.
Come on, Scott, you can get up there.
It's, it's easier to pronounce Duda.
I still can't pronounce Todd's last name. Yeah, but it's just if you read it. I think that's it.
Okay, let me read this resolution. Whereas, the Duda family has had a presence in Brevard County since the 1940s. The property then was called Cocoa Ranch, and initially was a cattle ranch, and later a sod farm. And whereas, in August 1989, the Viera Company, formerly Duda Lands, broke ground on the new mixed-use and master-planned community of Viera, which means faith in the Duda's Slovak language, and honors the faith that brought the Duda family to America from Slovakia and sustained them in difficult times. And whereas, over the last 30 years, the Viera Company has expertly and diligently executed the master plan envisioned by the Duda family to create their town of Viera in Brevard County, which is recognized as a top 25 best-selling master planned community in the entire United States. That's a pretty tall order. Whereas, since the community's groundbreaking, the Viera Company has invested more than $175 million in infrastructure development for the construction of arterial and collective roadways that are part of the regional roadway network and which support, attract, and enhance both mobility and economic development efforts in central Brevard County. And whereas, Viera has grown into a thriving community, providing a significant economic impact to Brevard County by facilitating the development of over 12,000 homes, 10,000 jobs within 725 businesses, 3.5 million square feet of commercial and retail space, multiple places of worship, and is home to over 27,000 residents, and counting, I might add. And whereas, Viera will continue to grow over the next 20-plus years into a community that further enriches the quality of life for all of the residents who call Viera home and provides an environment for Viera's businesses to thrive, with future development potential of 31,000 more homes, an estimated 25,000 jobs, approximately 7 million square feet of commercial and retail space, and about 70,000 residents to build out. Whereas, the community of Viera celebrates the 30th anniversary of its groundbreaking during the month of August. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby congratulate and recognize the Viera Company for its 30 years of outstanding work in developing a thriving, growing, and vibrant community in the heart of Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of August 2019. Madam Chair, I propose this resolution be passed.
A motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name's Todd Polkrieva, President of the Viera Company. Want to quickly introduce some members of our team. We don't have everybody here today, but some key members of our team include, from the marketing department, we have Mickey Levanos with the camera, and Lori Witkowski with the phone, Stephanie Byrd over here with another phone, from our land development department, Jason Carter and Tyler Duda, Vice President of Sales and...
And just for everyone's edification, I am going to be supporting this with the caveats noted.
Yeah.
Vote on it?
Yeah.
We get vote on?
No, we...
Okay, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to call the Duda folks up.
That's not a Duda.
It's easier to pronounce Duda.
I still can't pronounce Todd's last name. Yeah, but it's just if you read it, huh? I think that's it.
Okay, let me read this resolution. Whereas, the Duda family has had a presence in Brevard County since the 1940s. The property then was called Cocoa Ranch, and initially was a cattle ranch, and later a sod farm. And whereas, in August 1989, the Vieira Company, formerly Duda Lands, broke ground on the new mixed-use and master-planned community of Vieira, which means faith in the Dudas' Slovak language, and honors the faith that brought the Duda family to America from Slovakia and sustained them in difficult times. And whereas, over the last thirty years, the Vieira Company has expertly and diligently executed the master plan envisioned by the Duda family to create their town of Vieira in Brevard County, which is recognized as a top 25 best-selling master plan community in the entire United States. That's a pretty tall order. Whereas, since the community's groundbreaking, the Vieira Company has invested more than 175 million dollars in infrastructure development for the construction of arterial and collective roadways that are part of the regional roadway network and which support, attract, and enhance both mobility and economic development efforts in central Brevard County. And whereas, Vieira has grown into a thriving community, providing a significant economic impact to Brevard County by facilitating the development of over 12,000 homes, 10,000 jobs within 725 businesses, 3.5 million square feet of commercial and retail space, multiple places of worship, and is home to over 27,000 residents, and counting, I might add. And whereas, Vieira will continue to grow over the next 20-plus years into a community that further enriches the quality of life for all of the residents who call Vieira home and provides an environment for Vieira's businesses to thrive, with future development potential of 31,000 more homes, an estimated 25,000 jobs, approximately 7 million square feet of commercial and retail space, and about 70,000 residents yet built out. Whereas, the community of Vieira celebrates the 30th anniversary of its groundbreaking during the month of August. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby congratulate and recognize the Vieira Company for its 30 years of outstanding work in developing a thriving, growing, and vibrant community in the heart of Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of August 2019. Madam Chair, I propose this resolution be passed.
A motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Todd Polkrieva, President of the Vieira Company. Want to quickly introduce some members of our team. We don't have everybody here today, but some key members of our team include, from the marketing department, we have Mickey Levanos with the camera, and Lori Witkowski with the phone, Stephanie Byrd over here with another phone, from our land development department, Jason Carter and Tyler Duda, Vice President of Sales and Community Management, Scott Miller, General Counsel, Senior Vice President, Jay Decatur, and Residential and Commercial Sales Specialist, Karen Esposito. So good sampling of our team. Others couldn't be here, wish they could have been. Some are watching it on their computers right now, and those at our parent company in Oviedo with Aduda and Sons are also viewing the meeting this morning. As we celebrate Vieira's 30th anniversary of the community's groundbreaking in 1989, a reflection back over time on some of our large-scale gains in the resolution underscores the guiding principles that were established by the Duda family that have governed the manner in which Vieira's been developed. Our mission has been to create a financially successful community with educational and worship opportunities, active recreation, diverse employment, and above all, a place that emphasizes all events and activities with a sense of community. The mission is shaped by our values: faith, responsibility, stewardship, and integrity. We've come a very long way in 30 years, since the groundbreaking in August of 1989. Shortly after the master plan was unveiled, the Vieira Company seeded the community with land donations for the Brevard County Government Center, the School Board, and the Judicial Center. These would ultimately become the heart of Vieira, a place where important government services were in proximity to both our residents and our businesses, all in the heart of Vieira. We've contributed to expanding the property tax base in Brevard County, and our large-scale infrastructure investment has and continues to allow the Vieira Company to be nimble in responding to economic opportunities. We have a long runway still in front of us, approximately 20-plus years of development before we're built out, and we have the ability to continue developing a nationally-recognized master plan community that relies on good relationships like that with Brevard County. The relationship with Brevard County provides us the necessary predictability and certainty in the regulatory process, so we can respond to the market and compete for opportunities to enhance our quality of life. We're very honored, as the Vieira Company and Aduda and Sons, to have this recognition today by Brevard County. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Vieira Company and the Duda family. You have been so generous to our county and our community, and you have definitely built a very excellent community, and I'm going to call it faith community now. But I just want to say thank you so much for your excellence. You certainly did it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Todd, and thanks for your accessibility. I appreciate that I can pick up the phone and call, and you're like, hey, Christine, and you're just flush with information when we need it, and we appreciate your support of the county and those relationships that you've made with people to make sure that we have all the information when we do, when you do have an item before us. So thank you. Thanks for being so willing to meet with me. All right.
Thanks.
If you guys could go on to the stairs. I could have you on the stairs. From Korea. All right. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Seuro?
Nicely done.
All right.
Good morning.
I want to read the resolution first, and then you can tell us all about it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Whereas, the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, EDC, is officially launching its new county-wide Salute Our Military Recognition Campaign. And whereas, Brevard County is home to Patrick Air Force Base, Cape Canaveral Air Force Station, the 45th Space Wing Naval Ordnance Test Unit, Florida Air National Guard, the United States Coast Guard, and numerous military organizations and their families who lend to the strength and engine that drives the economy and quality of life in Brevard County, Florida, and the nation. And whereas, the EDC will spark an explosion of regional awareness, appreciation of our United States Armed Forces and their family members who have an economic impact of 1.1 billion dollars in fiscal year 2017, and military retirees residing in Brevard County who receive over 992.8 million in military pensions. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize, honor, and encourage the dedication and commitment of members of the United States Armed Forces in serving the United States. Whereas, building partnerships between the public and private sector, our military personnel and their families solidifies our commitment to the United States Armed Forces in preserving our freedoms. Now therefore, be it resolved that Brevard County, Florida hereby recognizes and supports "Celebrating Our Military by the EDC Space Coast Salute Our Military Bumper Sticker Campaign." Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of August 2019. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you, thank you. So good morning, County Commission. Good morning to everyone here in this room. I do, I would be remiss, first quick introduction. So my name is Daniel Seuro. I'm a 10-year military veteran here, Go Air Force, stationed at Patrick, was stationed at Patrick Air Force Base in support of launch operations, have since, oh goodness, time flies, have since become a financial planner. However, but today I come to you as the Chair of the Space Coast Defense Alliance, and I would be remiss if I didn't bring two partners that are here that have been invaluable to this initiative as well. So, sir, if you don't mind, Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Admiral, or Admiral and Commissioner Wayne Justice, and Trudy, where are you? I know you're hiding somewhere. There you are. So Trudy's representative of the EDC as well. So very quick background, I don't mean to give the Commission my back, really to everyone, to give you some quick background on this program. So every year, we take a trip to Washington, DC. We take a Washington, we take a trip to DC as a delegation, and certainly thankful to Commissioner Pritchett and Commissioner Smith, who have joined us in this trip in years past, and those other Commissioners are always certain welcomed, and we look forward to your continued participation and continued support of the EDC. Every year, we go there, and we meet with business leaders, we meet with legislative leaders, and we meet with military leaders. So one of the meetings that we have is we meet with the Secretary of the Air Force, as well as the Chief of Staff of the Air Force. So that's the four-star general, as well as the secretary, as I mentioned. And we ask, what can we do best? What can we do well, and how can we support our military? What are your initiatives that you want us to take care of? And one of the big initiatives was simply put, help the military family. Simple as that. Help the military family. So we've taken that active approach and have created this campaign. This is just the start. This campaign, this bumper sticker, this website, these door hangers, this is just the start to build awareness to this campaign, to get you to a website where we're going to have additional content for individuals to share what the military means to them, either through personal service, through familial service, through, you know, just a neat story of helping a veteran, whatever the case may be. And that is the key. So this is a request by the Secretary of the Air Force, taken and turned into tangible action, and tangible program, or tangible action that turned into a program that we're here to unveil today. So I want to say thank you. If you don't mind, please, oh wonderful, the Commissioners already have it. So this is what you'll see coming around. This is very similar to the "We Love Our Military" campaign that we've had in years past. This is the new version of it, and we certainly welcome each and every one of you to represent it. If you don't like bumper stickers on your car, that's okay, I would agree with you. But if you don't like bumper stickers on your car, we have door hangers as well for your business, to let the community know at large that you support the military, and you certainly support this initiative. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts. Admiral Justice, if you don't, you're welcome to say a few words. And Trudy, thank you very much. And the Commission, as always, thank you so much for your support of this initiative, and we certainly thank the public for your attention and understanding. And if you have any questions, certainly seek us out, and seek out the EDC office as well.
Daniel?
Sir?
I would suggest that most people don't want those things on their cars.
I agree.
But if you put them on the back window?
Yes.
Then they don't damage the paint. Everybody sees them, and you can peel them off anytime you want.
Exactly. Yeah, perfect. Absolutely.
Do you have to have window frames for those people?
Yeah, perfect. Wonderful. Great, great, great point. Thank you. So again, thank you for your time and effort, and we certainly appreciate your attention.
Thank you. I think I'm really excited about the campaign, and I appreciate you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. We're all part of the same team.
I do, it's called my taxes.
Commissioner Pritchett, can you step up on the stairs? Yes, ma'am. And go this way a little? Perfect. Commissioner Tobias?
This is a resolution for airport, which happens to fall in my district, Madam Chair. Whereas, the Florida Department of Transportation recognizes superior achievement each year by presenting an award in honor of General Aviation Airport of the Year. And whereas, the Florida Department of Transportation Aviation and Space Sports Office considers the category of safety, aesthetics, and airport management. And whereas, the Valkyria Airport Management has facilitated and overseen many airport improvement projects over the last 10 years to enhance services to the community for businesses and pleasure travelers. And whereas, these projects include increasing the number of aircraft hangers from 24 to 95, the addition of improvement to allow for night operations, and the recent completed new construction of a 9,000-square-foot, two-story general aviation terminal building. And whereas, the Florida Department of Transportation awarded the Valkyria Airport as General Aviation Airport of the Year 2019 during the statewide CFASPP meeting, August 3, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does hereby commend Airport Manager Steve Borowski and Airport Administration and Maintenance Staff for their contributions in support of Valkyria Airport growth and operations in Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 20th day of August 2019. Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
I just want to say I was happy to see this on the agenda. These folks, and I don't mean to suggest that anyone else that works in our other airports isn't stellar and solid, but these folks are incredible. I can tell you that when I went down there with Fritz in my office, we got a great feeling when we were down there. They were responsive. We shared some ideas in terms of how to keep things efficient. I know that they went forward and acted on those, so they're exactly the types of employees that I'd like to have.
Thank you. Do you want to say a few words?
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for recognizing us and giving us this resolution. I'd like to thank the State of Florida also for recognizing us. There's over 110 general aviation airports, and the only select one, it didn't come in just a couple of years, it took quite a long time. 15 years ago, Peggy Busaka came to me and said, you think we can do something with a couple of the airports here? And we worked on all of them, including Melbourne Airport back 15 years ago, but Valkyria was one of the roughest ones to turn around. So it wasn't something that happened in just a few years, it took quite a long time. But if you think about, if you've known the airport, what it looked like 15 years ago, what it's like today, and how much money it used before, and how it generates a dollar now, and the assets are there, and again, there's been, as you well know, there's more than 24, 25 million dollars has been invested in the airport, and the airport makes its match. I would like to recognize someone that's retiring today, which is Jim Wexstrom with the Florida Department of Transportation. He's District 5 Representative. He started on our first master plan 14 years ago, and then the second one helped us through that. Then also, there was an engineer, Scott Brady, with EG Solutions, that worked with this, with our, is our consulting engineering firm. And without those two representatives and those two agencies, we wouldn't be able to get this. And of course, our staff here, we, it's our little "we" team, but we all put our efforts in, and it's nice that the State of Florida's come back and recognized us and the board. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody want to say? Did you get our picture with John?
Yes.
I think everyone.
For everyone?
Serves entire Brevard County.
I'll go down, as long as you're in the front and center.
All right. Item seven. Do we have a presentation to commemorate Sebastian Inlet District's centennial?
Yes. Good morning. Why I load this up? James Gray, Sebastian Inlet District. Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for allowing us the time to showcase this today. So I am honored and privileged to represent the district. We're actually celebrating our centennial year. And who are we? We are actually, we were created in 1919 as an independent special district by an act of the State of Florida Legislature. We're actually one of 1,700 special districts within the state of Florida. Our main charter actually is to provide safe navigation through the lagoon into the Atlantic Ocean, and vice versa, and the projects that we represent in maintaining that navigation as far as channel maintenance, I will be discussing a little bit shortly. So as of one of 60 inlets in the state of Florida, we're actually unique, because we are actually between Brevard County and Indian River County, which is our special district makeup. We're a multi-county special district, again, which makes us unique. We're also bordered by the Sebastian Inlet State Park, which is actually independent of the district, but one of our partners in maintaining the resources around the area. We are also, as a special district, we're governed by a five-member elected board. We have three Commissioners from Brevard County, as well as two Commissioners from Indian River County. The majority of the population's in Brevard County. As such, we have three Commissioners representing the district from Brevard. As I mentioned, we're mainly responsible for safe navigation through the inlet as a result of maintenance, channel maintenance. We also have a sand trap, which we routinely dredge and bypass the material that we dredge onto downdrift beaches, and we're also involved in a number of environmental resource programs. Today, we heard a lot about the, you know, different lagoon initiatives. We also conduct seagrass monitoring annually as a result of our responsibilities. So getting into our history, May 23, 2019 marked the actual centennial year of the district. To showcase our centennial year, and again, I'm honored and privileged to be here to talk about it today, and I appreciate that, we produced a historical video, which I'll show you in a moment. We developed a traveling display of banners, which we talked with staff, and we're actually going to showcase that in one of the buildings here in the county complex. And we're also planning a family-friendly event this coming September 14. So if you can bear with me one moment, I am just going to escape out of this and start the video. It's about seven minutes. which is actually independent of the district, but one of our partners in maintaining the resources around the area. We are also, as a special district, we're governed by a five-member elected board. We have three Commissioners from Brevard County, as well as two Commissioners from Indian River County. The majority of the population's in Brevard County. As such, we have three Commissioners representing the district from Brevard. As I mentioned, we're mainly responsible for safe navigation through the inlet. As a result of maintenance, channel maintenance, we also have a sand trap which we routinely dredge and bypass the material that we dredge onto downdrift beaches, and we're also involved in a number of environmental resource programs. Today, we heard a lot about the, you know, different lagoon initiatives. We also conduct seagrass monitoring annually as a result of our responsibilities. So getting into our history, May 23, 2019 marked the actual centennial year of the district. To showcase our centennial year, and again, I'm honored and privileged to be here to talk about it today, and I appreciate that, we produced a historical video, which I'll show you in a moment. We developed a traveling display of banners, which we talked with staff, and we're actually going to showcase that in one of the buildings here in the county complex. And we're also planning a family-friendly event this coming September 14th. So if you can bear with me one moment, I am just going to escape out of this and start the video. It's about seven minutes, so I appreciate the time.
The history of the Sebastian Inlet is long and complex. The history of the inlet today, as we know it, traces back to one man. The history of the Sebastian Inlet is long and complex. The history of the inlet today, as we know it, traces back to one man, most likely just about the very first settler in this area. His name was David Peter Gibson. He came down here first in 1859. The highway was that lagoon. There was no I-95. There were no roads. There were no overland trails. To get here, you had to come by boat. As for substantiated attempts to open the Sebastian Inlet here, they really began in earnest in, well, 1872. Things began to really get serious in 1905. There was an organization that mounted an effort and actually opened the inlet. Water flowed through the inlet for two weeks. Royden Orestesso Couch, more than any other human being, was responsible for getting this inlet open. And when he arrived in 1905, he probably witnessed this effort being made to open the inlet and became interested. He was the kind of guy that couldn't take no for an answer. In 1914, he tried, but could not get funding for it at that time. The Hewlett-Roads Bill in 1917 was an effort to make it possible for a taxing district to be created. When the vote was taken here in the county, the north end of the county voted against it, and the south end of the county voted for it, and so it didn't happen. Roy Couch continued to lobby for any kind of governmental aid he could. So on May 23, 1919, the Sebastian Inlet District came into being. And with that, it was all systems go. Roy Couch had the six-inch suction dredge ready to go. He got Charlie Simbler Sr. down here at the site, and operations began.
The inlet not only provided a way for navigation, for the boats to go out, but it was also a recreation area, and it became very popular. They would bring Model Ts loaded down with lumber and build shannies right along the south shore of the inlet. It was one of the 1933 hurricanes that wiped these little shannies off the map. At the opening of the new decade of 1940, the inlet was doing well, but we had a nor'easter, and it came down and it began to close the inlet. Then Pearl Harbor happened. They decided to leave it closed. They were concerned about the U-boats that were showing up in the Atlantic. We even had a tower that was located on the north side of where the inlet was. We had war games too, but they were getting ready to go to the Pacific. The terrain was more like the Pacific Islands that they knew they would have to invade. In 1948, after the war, it was obvious that the inlet had to be reopened. The economy of the whole area depended on it. And the Commissioners at that time, one of them in particular, had some connection to be able to get some of the leftover munitions from the war and to open that inlet in a very dramatic way. So, once it was opened, it has been maintained since that time until today. By the '50s, they had come up with some very unique and important improvements to the district. The widening and the deepening of the inlet, extending the jetties both north and south. In February of 1965, a new bridge was opened over the inlet connecting Brevard County and Indian River County. During the '70s, the state of Florida decided that this Sebastian Inlet area was the perfect place for a state park.
In the mid-1980s, there was a vacancy on the Sebastian Inlet Tax District Commission, and some folks came to me and asked me if I would consider an appointment from Governor Bob Martinez. The very first vote that I cast was for the first long-range planning document to be assembled for any inlet around the state of Florida. We needed someone to follow through and execute the long-range management plan. We hired an executive director. We also exercised our influence in maximizing and leveraging grants that were available. When we got into that area, we really started bringing in the higher education and the scientific institutions. But we put it all together and became, in the late 1980s and the early 1990s, really without a doubt, the gold standard in the state of Florida. And that's where much of the success that you see today, that's where much of it started. Building a brand-new north jetty that was completely roded, and it was a safety hazard. Allowed to build offices and infrastructure, water, picnic pavilions out on Sandpoint, rocker vetements that were on lined each side of the inlet. Continued planning for navigational markers on the interior of the floodshole area, and probably the fishing museum and the offices for the park were one of the larger items that were done, but we enjoy the spoils of all that hard work today. My great-grandfather, whom I was named after, he was the first one here. But chances like that usually come once in a lifetime, and I wasn't going to let it get by.
Well, I started in 2004, and it started with a bang, because right after I started, I think about three days later was Hurricane Jean, and then Francis followed right after. Then we had a new commission that started right immediately following the storms. The new commission in 2004 took on a stance for fiscal responsibility. And so, over about a three-year period, we reduced our tax rate by 68%. They also leaned in cost share with other agencies. In the state of Florida, DEP, cost shared with our projects. I think in 10 years, we brought in over $8 million of cost share. Also, Florida Inlet Navigation District, working with them, they helped us with some funding on our channel work and anything that's navigation-related. The opening of Sebastian Inlet, over the last 100 years, has created massive flood shoals from the sand, and so this is prime habitat for seagrass. 240 acres of lush seagrass beds. These beds have been damaged by boaters that zigzag back and forth trying to find their way into the inlet. When we completed our navigation channel, marked the channel, this directed the boaters without crossing the grass beds, without creating prop scars and dredging up the sensitive seagrass. All in all, our economic analysis showed that this inlet is worth about $200 million a year to the local region. We actually deepened and expanded our sand trap, which is a 42-acre depression in the middle of the inlet. About every four years, it collects 200,000 cubic yards of sand. By state law, we have to take that sand and then transport it, bypass it to the south, to make up for any coastal erosion. Today, I would say that we're a very sophisticated inlet because of the approach to science and management. We are the most data-rich inlet, not only in the state of Florida, but I believe on the east coast of the United States. The Sebastian Inlet is a premier surfing, boating, fishing, sightseeing destination. There's people that come from all over the world to visit this area.
Okay, we're almost done. Let's go back from, back to the slide. Does everybody see that on their screens?
Back to the, that's why you have the guru here.
Okay, perfect. As I mentioned, you just saw the video. As I mentioned, we have our historical displays. There's 12 of these. It actually goes through the 100 years of our history. We're going to showcase that with the approval, thank you, in one of the government buildings, as I mentioned. So I invite everybody to go through that. We had a great opportunity to have so many resources, so many assets, most locations don't have. So it's all showcased here in our displays. And finally, I did initially introduce that we're having a community event, September 14, 2019. This is actually at the, majority of the event is at the northern part of the state park entrance. It's from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's free, with the exception of the state park entrance fees, which vary depending on your party size, but all the other events are free and included in this. We have informational booths and some vendors, more along the natural resources, environmentally conscious folks. We have a youth fishing demo and instruction, limited, but that is available for children. We also have a surf, surfing demo as well. The Coast Guard Auxiliary is going to be down. They have a safe boating course, as well as certifying your vessel as safe. So I would definitely, for the boaters in here and don't have that Coast Guard distinction, it is recognized and very helpful. And then also, we have educational sessions on our natural resources, which includes sea turtles, seagrasses, and our other natural, arborum environments. So thank you for the time. I appreciate it. I know you have a lengthy commission agenda to go through, but again, thank you and staff for, and to the public for allowing us to show this to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. You can tell you're very proud of the area, and you should be. It's pretty amazing over there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb, did you have something?
I think that was, I think there was an old light on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to consent. I have a card, so we need to pull item F-16, and then if Commission wants to pull anything else.
Just real briefly, I actually was playing phone tag with one of the folks in the audience. I didn't know if that was the item that she was most concerned about. Okay, it seems to be it.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling out item 16.
Second.
I have a motion for consent minus item 16, and a second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item F-16. Frank? Did you want to just introduce the item, or have staff introduce the item? Before the speaker comes up?
Commissioner, this item is a renewal of an existing board policy. There are minor revisions to it. The only revisions that we have to it really deal with the name of Fleet Services. As part of the audit, they requested, instead of Central Fleet Services, it's just be called Fleet Services. And I believe there are no substantive changes to the existing policy.
I think it's a different one.
I think it's a different item.
Which item?
I think it's the bank one.
Oh, 16?
F-16, yeah.
We actually have, I believe Steve Burdette is here from the Clerk's office for item 16.
If you could just briefly introduce the item, if you don't mind?
Sure. The item is to renew the contract for banking, which is with SunTrust. The county, the original contract was for eight years and had three three-year extensions on it. This would be the third and final extension on the contract. And so, probably two years from today, purchasing will go out and do an RFP for banking services in the future. The compensation, as I explained before, we manage a compensating balance with the bank, and they earn, they credit for us, just depends on what the market rates are. And it's supposed to work out to about $45,000 a year for banking. So that is the contract.
Commissioner Loeb?
And just real briefly, I want to summarize a couple of things that we discussed about this beforehand, because I just, I guess the plainest way to state it was concern that we were paying to have someone hold our money and then essentially lend it out at a higher interest rate than they're paying us. But from our conversation, essentially, this is something that did go out to bid previously, and that, I guess you or your office are confident there really isn't much room for savings in, in the future. Is that right?
There might be savings. It takes like six months to convert from one bank to another, so we have to really do like a cost analysis.
So there's, I guess there's a labor cost associated, even if there were a potentially lower expense banking option?
There's time, there's conversion of the bank accounts, there's the investments, there's everything. Anything that deals with money, it'll deal with the bank. So you're probably not going to want to change a bank if you're going to save $10 a year by going out for a new one. But that's something that they'll have to evaluate at that time.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
And I'll just make a comment too. If you were not satisfied with the services that SunTrust was providing, you would probably recommend to go out, correct?
Yes, we would have.
Okay, all right. I have a card. If you could just stick around in case we have any other questions, if you don't mind. Thanks. Chet Ellsworth?
Good morning.
Hi.
989 North Highway 81A, Indian Atlantic, Florida. And I would like to address this issue on the SunTrust Bank contract renewal. And first, I want to, I want to say that I have prepared a citizen's request on this issue, if I can approach.
Sure. I mean, you have something to hand out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, of course, want to object to the contract renewal based on how it was presented. The agenda item had no citation to authority, and Steve didn't put his name on it. No one put their name on it. There's no auditing authorities or anybody that touched this. Part of the reason I am precluded from saying too much about it is 83606, the Florida statute precludes anything, anybody saying any derogatory comments about a bank, which I have plenty to say, and I have done it in the consent order. The option to renew, it expired. It expired August 1st. So, any, any kind of approval after that fact is very prejudicial to the taxpayers and this taxpayer myself. The renewal was without the authority, and I appreciate Steve coming down here to say something about it, to put a handle on who drew this up. And I want to just let people know, notice that SunTrust is not a bank. And the expiration of this contract is gain for the taxpayer and this taxpayer also. Thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just a couple of questions for Mr. Burdette. As far as your employment at this point, you're not an employee of Brevard County, you're an employee of the Comptroller's Office, are you not?
Brevard County Clerk, yes, sir.
Which serves as the comptroller for the county. So essentially, you perform audit functions, at least to a large degree, for county finance?
Yes, we do pre-audit, and we also work with the independent auditors.
I appreciate it. I'll leave it at that.
I have another card. I would just encourage anybody who has public comments to get the cards in before we close public comments, if you don't mind. Sandra Sullivan? Yeah, this is what the card's for.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I did fill out a card. For some reason, it didn't show up.
Okay.
So I apologize.
It wasn't personal. It's just that sometimes that happens, and I've actually missed people because we've gotten them late, but...
Okay, so, one second. Okay, so, I didn't even know, but I was looking up on the bio solids, and I looked up on the consent packet, and I saw hundreds and hundreds of pages on the Vieira development. I am exceedingly concerned about this development because I'm hearing from scientists about the condition of the St. John's River.
Is this about item F-16?
This is about the Vieira company. All the, there are hundreds and hundreds of pages that were in. Is that part of the?
This is not this item.
So, that's not on the agenda though, but it was in the consent packet?
I'm not sure which item you're referring to, but it's not F-16.
The hundreds and hundreds of pages that are in the, in the, in the packet, in the agenda packet. What does that pertain to?
I think it was the resolution that came up earlier.
Yeah, the resolution was done at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
If you're going to be here, though, you can certainly speak for three minutes.
During public comment, if you want.
It's okay to speak right now?
Not, because this has to pertain to this item. I'm sorry.
But you'll have a full three minutes for speaking when the public comment period comes up. comes up.
It's a misunderstanding, because I spoke to her about that, and maybe that's why it's not on here, but she looked it up to see what that was in the packet and wrote it down, so somehow it got missed, but it's exceedingly important.
But if you, depending on when you filled this out, that item was...
I was one of the, I was the first person here this morning.
Okay, because I have other cards for you on other items.
Yes, on other items, yes.
Okay.
This is the most important item I came to speak about today.
I make a motion to approve item F-16, ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, and before I call a vote, Ms. Bentley, are you concerned about any of the legality of this item, or the way that it's formatted?
I see what he's talking about with the renewal and a sixty-day term, but they can ratify that, and the other side may have exercised in a timely fashion as well, so the short answer is no, I don't have a concern.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll call it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item G, public comments. Mr. Charles Tovey?
I wrote on my card to talk about trash, and there are so many things, and I messed up, but I want to first mention about the cards. I try and be a pioneer, the first to do things, and I come through the door, and there's tons of people at Mrs. Lewis's desk, and you can't get your cards in or any information, and it's real difficult for people, and I've mentioned it before in one of my expressions at this meeting. I want to talk about the trash, as Representative Randy Fine mentioned in one of his interviews, that it's not the laws, we keep on making all these laws for this and that, and if you're a friend of Sheriff Ivey, then it gets overlooked and it's okay, and I get things that don't even, aren't even illegal. But to go on about the trash, as Mr. Panic takes us one day off a year to come up here and speak about the trash, it's not about the trash, it's about the people, and all these things that we're making laws for is about the people, and it's a symptom, just like the lagoon and everything else. And I have 2004 minutes, 2:45 in the afternoon, a meeting started at five, and the first time I spoke was about the lagoon, and I want to speak about a lot of things, but I'm limited my access and resources, but it's not about the straws. And it was 9:05, 2009 minute, 2:45 is when I first spoke about the lagoon and some other things, and if you follow me, before all these items come up and people start looking at it, I've approached these items, and I've expressed concern for them, and it just gets overlooked and forgotten. It's not about the trash bags, it's not about the straws, it's not about the styrofoam cups, and you have to do, if we're not allowed to do it, then everybody, the building stops because of styrofoam cups, the crabbing stops because of styrofoam, you know, but my vehicles on my yard to protect my piece of property that I have left, the junkyard that everybody ridicules, you know, statistically, you only, should only have to replace your fuel filter and your fuel pump in your vehicle maybe once in a lifetime. Well, I didn't, I bought the truck, drove it home, didn't even drive it, go to register it, and come back home, it doesn't start. What happens? Well, I dropped my tank, fuel tank, and I come out with a couple just like my boat, a couple pounds of sand in the gas tank, and how'd that get there? And so I do my fuel pump and the gas tank, and come back after you take and clean my yard. There's more sand and more stuff in my gas tank, and why is that? Well, Sheriff Ivey's let my neighbors and the rest of them do this, and I don't appreciate it, and I'm looking for my next time to talk about everything, and have a nice day, and excuse me for my delivery.
That's okay. Ms. Sullivan, Sandra? And I think, I believe I have a card for that other item that's coming up in H. Yeah. That's okay, but we have a card for you, so you don't have to fill another one out for that one, but this is public comments.
Okay. One moment. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Okay, so, your primary role as our county commissioners, we appreciate what you do, is public health and safety and our infrastructure, so that's what I wanted to talk about. So, the Melbourne tests the raw water in Lake Washington once a month for cyanobacteria. They tested on the 10th of July and did not have the results back as of the 18th, when the riverkeeper contacted both DEP and the media about the pea soup algae bloom. However, the earthy moldy smell started at the end of June, caused by the presence of jasmin, which goes hand in hand with saxitoxin. Without specific treatment, cyanobacteria toxins were thus possible in our drinking water for most of July. It is concerning that Melbourne Water gaslighted us that the smell was our pipes, while reassuring us that the water was safe, though many people reported being ill. Melbourne Water said they are now testing weekly for cyanobacteria both in raw water and finished water, and that there remains a cyanobacteria bloom, it just isn't visible now because of the rain, and there's concern that this bloom to increase when the sun comes out. We request that the county commissioner advocate to the St. John's Water Management District and the state to put in real-time monitoring on the St. John's to prevent the public from being harmed by increasing frequency of algae toxins in our water, which may not be tested for up to a month. Melbourne Water did agree to do the 140 very basic water tests on the distribution. We're concerned that Melbourne Water flush hydrants at the sampling locations from Melbourne Beach to South Patrick Shores for more than three days, from Friday through Sunday. We wanted our water tested to see if it was safe, not gyrations, to make it safe, and then test. EPA guidelines say three minutes for sampling water, which is done at the time of sampling, not three days. According to a letter from Melbourne City Manager to Florida today, Melbourne, this was planned to do the flushing, Melbourne Water said the hydrants were inadvertently left on, we don't buy it, we're calling out corruption. We know there are issues beachside, because chlorine is very low or non-existent in South Patrick Shores, we have lower pressure beachside, and also do a secondary push of chemicals and cancer-causing THHems are higher beachside. We request county commissioners to advocate, to throw out the manipulated tests, and to do more testing on a comprehensive test. We also request the county commission to put an agenda item for infrastructure impact study by an engineering firm to look at present and future projection needs for aging sewage and water infrastructure issues that are plaguing 32937, and from everything, from the roads, the water, the sewage, emergency management, and projections on growth and other services. Thank you. Whoa.
Wow, you mastered that.
Thank you.
That was pretty good timing.
All right, Pamela White? I say you can bring, you can bring the little one up here, it's okay.
It's not mine.
That's why I said the little one, I don't ever assume.
Hi, my name is Pam White, I live in South Patrick Shores, in Satellite Beach, mail address. Water is life to humans. Why would we dump biosolids near our water sources is insane. Why we accept other counties' biosolids is self-destructive. We must come up with a new way to dry and dispose of biosolids. Water to the beachside areas needs to be more frequently tested than the mainland, because the water is pushed over and re-chemicalized, and they can't test us the same as they are the mainland. Our trust and respect for the water authority is currently at an all-time low. Many citizens had to step up to get everyone to hear and see the problems. Excuse me. I am fortunate enough to have been able to put a four-filter system in my home for drinking water and ice. My husband and I are also planning to put in a full-house system. But there are many people in our community who cannot afford to even put a filter on their refrigerator to clear their water, so we have to think about our elderly, our very young, and those people who are sick, and we need to figure out the water problem. I hope you consider our children and grandchildren, thank you very much. I hope you consider our children and grandchildren beyond them in keeping our water better than acceptable. And I do have a paralyzed vocal cord, so when I speak, sometimes one vocal cord doesn't work.
You're fine.
Sorry, I was feeling for you there.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you so much. Peter Carnsall? And I'm sorry if I said your name incorrectly, your last name.
It's close enough.
Oh, good.
Okay. It's Peter Carnisal.
Carnisal, okay.
Okay. Basically, my name is Pete Carnisal, I live at 1910 Independence Avenue, which is in IRCC. I know, I'm hoping that Mr. Smith received my email, okay? I know that you did, because you got an automated response system, and I had copied all of the commissioners on it as well. And this relates to the turn signal that we're trying, not a turn signal, but a turn lane, okay, coming into IRCC off of Vieira Boulevard, now that it's been widened. Prior to the widening, all right, the right-hand lane was basically an unofficial stacking lane. And the reason I say that is because when you go past the, basically, it became a single lane, and there were signs, and there were arrows pointing everybody to the left for at least about a quarter of a mile prior to that entrance. That has disappeared as a result of the widening. As the people make a right-hand turn, the people, number one is what we're talking about in elderly community, number two is as they make the right-hand turn, that is only about enough room for two cars before they hit a gate. And as a result, and the people cannot see around that corner, so basically, what we're looking at, the people are going to be making, the people that are going to there, which are pretty much elderly, are going to be slowing down to probably ten, five to ten miles an hour, in an area which is now forty miles an hour. And if, it's a matter of if, not when, there will be a rear-end correlate collision. And I'm hoping that, basically, that will be addressed, and I think from Mr. Smith's executive, that they are already thinking in terms of looking at that. So I'm not arguing that it's not being looked at, all right? I'm thanking you for that as well, but I would like to basically, if possible, make an appointment with you at some point, so that we can discuss the whole thing in more detail.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we are.
I've spoken to your executive, so I do know that that's happening. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Yeah, it says alarm. All right, Daniel Williman?
My name's Daniel Williman, I live in Satellite Beach, and most of the visual aids that I'm about to present, you can find under that namesake on my Facebook page. I want to talk a little bit about biosolids, but not just about biosolids. Biosolids are a big problem. They're very close, they're encroaching on our St. John's River. This is an image of Deer Park Ranch, highlighted in the red on the west side of the St. John's, but also, I want to talk about the muck that's being dredged out of the Indian River right now, the Grand Canal Muck Dredging Project. This little red plot of land over here is Platt family land on the east side of the St. John's, and now we're going to be putting the muck from the dredging projects out there on the east side. We're kind of pinching the St. John's here. Now, that's a concern of mine, can we find a better spot to put that muck so that we don't encroach on our drinking water supply? The St. John's flows north, it's one of the only rivers that flows north, and it's feeding Lake Washington, our drinking water reservoir from the south, where all this stuff is being dumped, and that pinch is going to happen, so we could very well make our drinking water even worse by putting the dredged muck there. Another thing, when I want to talk about the biosolids here, as seen at the Cocoa Beach wastewater reclamation facility, PFOS is concentrated by the treatment process, the effluent tested higher than the influent on that plant. Are there other contaminants that are being concentrated by this? Are there other unregulated contaminants that are being concentrated by this? Are those unregulated contaminants then being put out on the fields to drain into the St. John's River basin and be included in our drinking water, undetected because they're unregulated? That's a big concern. Brevard County is literally surrounded by biosolids. This is a map I put together, you can find this on my Facebook page, and the colored dots indicate large groupings of biosolid sites. You can see Brevard County is surrounded by large groupings of biosolid sites. It seems like the largest dumping of biosolids happens around us and our drinking water. That's a big concern of mine. I think it needs to be looked at a little bit more closely. And the final thing that I want to touch on is proximity of biosolids to where the borrow pit is, where we got the nourishment material for the beach. That blue highlighted over here is, at what I understand to be the borrow pit, or one of the borrow pits, where we got the beach nourishment material from, and just on the other side of it is a very large field of biosolids. That's a very large concern of mine, considering that I live on the beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. And we'll move on to public hearings. Item H-1?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H-1 is a petition to vacate a public utility and drainage easement that is centered along the common line between lots three and four of the Sweetwater Downs subdivision and MEMS. This will allow the owner to combine lots and build a single-family home. We've sent out notices to county agencies and public utility companies, and we received no objections.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Loebur. I don't have any speaker cards on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-2?
Item H-2 is a petition to vacate part of a public utility and drainage easement on Lot 14 of the Waterway Estates Fifth Edition subdivision in Satellite Beach. This will remove an existing pool deck and screened patio as encroachments into the easement, and we've sent notices out, and we received no objections.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Loebur, and I have no cards on this as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. H-3?
H-3 is a petition to vacate two public utility and drainage easements that are centered along common lot, common line between lots 28 and 29 of the Barefoot Bay Unit 1 subdivision, and this will allow the owners who, owner who owns both lots to build a garage, and we've sent notice out, and had, received no objections.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Sure. Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Loebur, and I don't have any cards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H-4?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H-4 is a request for the Board to consider an amendment and a restatement of the development order for the Vieira development of regional impact. This amendment includes a revision to condition number four to allow the Vieira Company to exchange the development program based on the transportation equivalency matrix without increasing the number of residential units or increasing the external trip ends. They will have to notify the county that they're utilizing the matrix, but it will not require the county approval as long as they exceed, they don't exceed those two conditions. It also extends the phase and the deadline and the build-out dates to coincide with the legislation extension provisions for state of emergencies, and it cleans up some scrivener's errors. Yesterday, the LPA heard this matter, and they approved it at their meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I also know the Vieira Company's here as well.
Okay, do you have questions now, Commissioner Loebur?
Just real briefly for staff, do you know what the vote was at the LPA, whether it was unanimous, or?
It was unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pukriva?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
I always get your name.
Commissioners, Todd Pukriva, President of the Vieira Company, 7380 Murrell Road, Suite 201, Vieira, Florida. The request is simple and straightforward. It's very narrow in terms of what's being requested, primarily cleanup, as Mr. Colkins outlined, to reflect the prior legislative extensions to certain phase, build-out, and deadline dates, correct mathematical Scrivener's errors in Exhibit Four, and to clarify provisions in Condition Four as it relates to land use exchanges between non-residential uses without increasing traffic impacts consistent with the development orders' exchange matrix. And that, that provides the necessary flexibility to respond to the market. I'm available for any questions, and Dorinda Marvin, Senior Planner with Grimes-Gobel, is also available.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for?
Just real briefly, one more for staff, if I may?
Okay.
So just, just to confirm with, with everything that's taken place since we had our briefing, do you have any concerns at this point with respect to the, the land use exchange?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
If you could just stick around because I've got some public comment cards in case there's some additional questions, if that's okay. All right, Sandra Sullivan? And after Sandra, Pamela White?
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I, I was looking through the agenda packet for the information on the biosolids, and my jaw just dropped at seeing this development. I had read about it in Florida today. What we're seeing across Florida are blue-green algae blooms because of how we've managed our, our surface waters and our wetlands and our flood plains. The St. John's River is, if you remember, after Irma was under, the flood plains were under three feet of water. These flood plains are exceedingly important for the safety of our people, but also they're important for the health. The wetlands and the flood plains filter the water. The grasslands filter the water that, that reaches the, the St. John's. It's a filtering mechanism. You take away and you erode on the, on those wetlands and those, those, those flood plain, and what you're doing is you're exasperating the issue with the drinking water. I'm talking to scientists and they're telling me that the St. John's River is not in good condition. We know it has the, we thought the algae bloom was gone. It's not gone. It's just the rain has pushed it down. It's still, the cyanobacteria is still there. So we have, we have issues ahead. I'm going to ask for an agenda item for this commission to consider a moratorium on any destruction of any wetlands or flood plains unless it's for infrastructure. And that includes a solar farm up in, up in, in D2. This is a health and safety, if we're not looking at the pattern of trends across Florida. The product, the prediction was in 2020, we would see the estuarine collapses by dam it all. He said, the, this, these group of scientists predicted at the rate of 650 people per year in Florida that we would see estuarine collapses in 2020. 2016, we saw a big fish kill. I mean, th- these issues across all the waterways. And this is going to be very, very difficult as a commission to put sustainable growth and put the health and safety of residents of Brevard ahead of developers. And it's going to be tough. There may be lawsuits and such. But if you don't do this, we're going to see further impairment of our drinking water and of our environment. The beaches have, the beaches have caution and red levels of toxins in them. The Indian River Lagoon, people don't want to fish or recreate in it anymore. They don't consider it safe. And you're going to see the, the impact to our local economic engine if you don't take proactive action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Pamela White?
Pam White, South Patrick Shores. I request that you delay development in our flood plains and wetlands of the St. John River area. Also, that if you could, please give us a, a place of discussion with an agenda item to allow public input on further discussions on this. Thank you.
Nancy Kirby?
Which of the two of you is, is going to be speaking?
Well, he might be speaking for me today, the way he's yelling.
You can just bring him straight back up here.
Yeah, sorry, guys, but I really needed to come here and speak, even though he's being a little crazy. So I am a resident of Melbourne, Florida. I live on John Rhodes, where all the work is being done off the 95. I believe I probably should have been put towards the public comments more than this section.
It says H4 on here.
Yeah, because I don't really feel like this is where I should be speaking. So do you want me to wait a little bit more?
Does this have anything to do with Vieira?
Biosolids? No.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll throw you in the public comments.
Perfect, thanks.
Or maybe, do you want to be in biosolids or the next round of public?
Biosolids.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Dorinda Marvin? You're good. Matt Fleming?
Matt Fleming, Satellite Beach. You guys are issuing a, an amended development order today, or discussing it, which is going to, I guess, be a development order for, it says, 20,000 acres in the agenda packet. The St. John's River is experiencing a toxic algae bloom. Development feeds these blooms, and it takes away the wetlands that mitigate those blooms. And, and we need to pay for utility upgrades. So I have three questions. These are not rhetorical. I think we, we deserve an answer on them. How many acres of the St. John's basin will be affected by this development? How much public money will the Vieira Land Company and the Duda family be receiving in the form of tax abatements from the county? And why is there no proposal to create an urban development boundary to protect these wetlands and our drinking water? Thank you.
All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. Commissioner Lober?
Just a few questions for staff, if I may? Can I write?
Yes.
All right, I, I don't know if maybe I should direct this first to Natural Resources, Virginia, if that works for you. But as to Ms. Sullivan's concerns, I, I don't pretend to be an algae bloom expert. I know a little about algae, but probably not nearly as much as you do. Do you have any concerns? And if so, what are those concerns with respect to how this proposed item relates to either algae blooms or drinking water?
I, I haven't seen, this wasn't my agenda item, so I haven't reviewed it. I'm not familiar with the.
Yeah, I'm sorry for kind of bringing you in out of, out of the blue here, but it's one of those where if planning and development doesn't have concerns, the only other department that I, I would really be concerned about with an item of this sort is natural resources. But I guess, well, if, if you have a moment to take a brief glance at it, just tell me if anything strikes you at least at first blush. In the meanwhile, I've, I've got a question for Tad with respect to this. So does this allow any additional destruction of wetlands beyond what's already been permitted?
What it does is, it, there's provisions in the development order that look at the wetlands in the area that can be developed, and it establishes criteria on how those can be, I don't want to necessarily say destroyed, but how they can be impacted in some way or another.
I'm just, and I apologize for, for my confusion on this, but obviously, we have something in place now, and this is going to amend what's in place. I'm just curious if this is putting us in the same position with respect to the amount of wetlands that are going to be impacted, a worse position or a better position?
I, I think it would put you in the same position as the amount of wetlands that would be impacted because there's no, they're not affecting, what's before you today is, is not a consideration for the Board that relates to the wetland impacts. That has been handled, that was approved with the original development order. I think the last reinstatement that we did was August, I'm now, sorry, October 2018, or was it 17, 2017? So the reason there's so many documents here is because we're actually reinstating the development order as opposed to just doing amendments to it.
Right.
So it makes it much easier for us to track and for the developer to understand what entitlements that they have is when we do that reinstatement. So there's a lot of material that's been presented, but a lot of that material is not for, is not what's being considered today.
Okay, because I, you know, if there already was some approval given by the county commission before I got here, as it sounds, with respect to that, I, I just don't want to make a situation worse than it already is. If it's not going to impact that, and it's sounding like, from your impression, it's not, then the biggest concern I would have on the item is, is no longer really a concern?
Yeah, it, what's happening today is not affecting the flood plain or the wetland provisions in the, the development order.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry for kind of putting you on the spot again, but if you had a chance even to glance at it.
Right, so, I mean, Vieira has to meet the code, and, and I'm sure that, you know, development order does that. And I know there are large conservation areas as well, but, you know, for a more detailed review, I would need time.
I, I can certainly appreciate that. You know, this is, this is one of those, it's not in my district. It certainly, as far as wetlands are concerned, has the potential to impact my district, but I've, I've really tried as much as I possibly could over, over the time I've been here to defer to the commissioners in whose districts the projects fall. So I'll, I'll back Mr. Smith however he wants to go on this.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve this development order.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item H5?
So item H5 is a request for the Board to conduct a public hearing to amend Chapter Two, Article Six, Division Two, entitled Code Enforcement, Special Magistrate of Brevard County Code of Ordinances. This amendment will accomplish basically three, three, three areas in general. It authorizes a special magistrate to vacate orders to reduce fines and lien amounts to the actual cost incurred by the county involving the code violation. It also establishes mitigating criteria and aggravating circumstances relating to the fine reductions and the lien reductions for the special magistrate to consider. And it clarifies and aligns the code provisions with some recent changes of Florida statute and our current practices. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, Tad, thank you for all the work on this. I like that we have given authority now to the special magistrate to reduce it to cost, which is typically what, what we, we try to come to on, on a lot of these cases. So I, I'm comfortable with this. And Madam Chair, when you're ready, I would like to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H6?
Item H6 is a request for the Board to conduct a public hearing to amend Chapter 62, Article Six, Section 62, 21, 31, entitled Temporary Use Agreements. This revision would allow for the timeframe for publicly and county-maintained lagoon restoration projects to coincide with the anticipated project duration up to five years. Currently, the code has a limitation of one year. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. I, I really like the idea that it's, has a physical impact of saving $200,000 a year.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H6? All right, H7?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a resolution to adopt the user fees for the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District. The district held their public hearing to discuss the fees within the boundaries of the district on August 13th. And the, the fees represent an increase of 2.44% from the prior year, which is the change in CPI.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Any comments? I, I'll just comment and say that, you know, I'm okay with Melbourne Tillman getting the CPI increase because they, you know, they unfairly went eight years about an increase. And with their, you know, miles and miles of the system to have to maintain all of that water in the South County, and any overflow directly impacts our, our Turkey Creek, which ultimately impacts the lagoon. I think a change in, increase for CPI is just now us trying to catch up. So I would just ask that commission supports this. I know this is a bit of an unusual situation because it's the two districts that it impacts that have the vote on this. But I would just, again, like to comment that it's just a CPI increase. And, you know, after several years of having no increase and operating on minimal equipment from the eighties trying to maintain our canal system, I'm amazed at the amount of work that they've done with as little as they've had. So I'll be supporting this. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've made multiple comments that this has been a tax or a fee increase in the past. So just for clarification, certainly as we move forward, and, and you've made some good points that for seven years, the person that sat in my seat previously did not vote for a CPI increase. Has, in, in your consideration, certainly as we move forward, has there been a tax or fee increase on the Melbourne Tillman in the past three years?
Yes, we voted on it last year. In the Melbourne Tillman.
As a tax or fee increase?
Yeah. District, I guess, a special district taxing authority assessment.
I don't understand.
I don't understand the premise of the question, but okay. So can someone make a motion?
I make a motion to approve, to this.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so.
What's that mean?
That just means, I don't know.
I think you, I think you go to some different.
It fails, but I, obviously, we have to see what Commissioner Tobias is okay with and whether or not I'm going to support it based on the voting. So do you have another suggestion, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As stated before, I have two suggestions. One would be to roll back to the 2018 numbers and the, and a second, I have both proposals here. One would be to roll back to 2018 plus institute the CPI from there. So I'm comfortable with either one. I've listened attentively, yet not responded, to comment that I voted for a tax increase on this one. And though this one may be a CPI, certainly there was one in the past. I'm just concerned as we move forward to listen to your suggestion. And that's why I have come with both of these proposals now that, the first one that I'll be handing out returns to 2018, thus doing away with the error, I guess, in, in my vote previously. And the second one, again, would get a little bit more, but would institute the CPI. This does not make up for the, I don't want to say error, but problematic vote that I made. Again, I'm just concerned as we move forward that you've made multiple comments, not only at this board, but on social media, that I was voting for tax or fee increases, and I certainly want to correct that mistake as soon as possible.
So what you're saying is that you're going to, you're going to vote against the 10% increase you initially supported because of comments I've made on social media? I mean, the comments I made on, I mean, it was actually only one comment, but I appreciate the fact that since, you know, obviously, it's of concern to you. My, my whole point of bringing it up in the past is that you, you've, you're quick to judge anybody on this commission that even raises anything, even if it's by CPI or higher, or the fact that we increased the sheriff's budget. And my point, at least then, was you had no problem raising the Melbourne Tillman rate 10%, but I see now that you've admitted that, I guess you've admitted now that it's a tax and that you regret that decision. I'm just getting this proposal now, so I'm not sure if we need to delay this, or are we, can we delay this? Because I, I have no idea what was just handed out. I would have liked a little time to review it.
Statute totally, I believe, we have a requirement to get this passed now, otherwise we'd have to call a special meeting because there's a date certain that we have to have this through for the year.
Yeah, the, the roll has to be certified by September 15th. So.
Yeah, the roll has to be certified by September 15th, so.
We could have certified it at the last Melbourne Tillman meeting, correct? But since Commissioner Tobia was out of town and not at the meeting, we had to do it today instead? Because we would have had another option if we had had another opportunity to meet, correct?
I, I, my understanding is that the public hearing does have to be held within the boundaries of the district, and District 3 and District 5 commissioner both have to approve the fees, so.
Ms. Bentley, what happens at this point if there's no action?
They have no resolution for user fees. It will expire.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed to that.
That means they could eat into their reserves till they run out, essentially, but if I may briefly.
See, and my concern is if we roll back to the 10% error that Commissioner Tobia claims that he's made, you know, voting for a fee increase and then pulling it back because someone dared me mention of it, we're going to end up hurting the Melbourne Tillman because somebody's feelings were hurt, and that's a bit ridiculous, if you ask me, and it's petty, because you guys are, have been running on fumes for how many years with no increases at all, and now we're gonna, we're gonna have a commissioner who's, who's too stubborn to act like an adult on this and try to roll you back 10%, and that's unfair. And so, I, I don't know what happens at this point. I mean, the commission is handling an issue, and I, you know.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just very briefly, I'm, I'm just trying to get us in a better position than any of this is, is going at this point. Do we have the ability, Ms. Bentley, to, on a temporary basis, just to prove a continuation of the current rates for a month or two while this gets sorted out and people can reconsider their relative perspect, positions?
Well, Melbourne Tillman will have to adopt a user fee as well. You can give an indication of what you would approve.
If we do that, we keep it at the 2344, 820, and 4540 for a period of 60 days or thereabouts, just to give people some breathing room?
Well, you have a problem with your budget at that point. How do you plan for the, the entire year? Because that's what you're, you're at that deadline now.
It's better, yeah, my, my thought is, it's not ideal, but it may be better than nothing, and if they plan at the lower rate, they can always go back and amend potentially.
I believe this has to be certified as part of the tax roll, which, according to statute, has to go before September 15th, so that it can be included as part of the, the property tax bill.
Got a list this long. I mean, who do I call on? Mr. Bate?
I just wanted to add that I believe there's an option on the table as well, that you can go back to the CPI for 2018, 2019, and add the 2020.
But I have no idea what that number looks like as far as their budget goes, because I just got this today. So, I mean, we can, if you like, or if, if commission's okay with it, we can move this item, like, later in the agenda, maybe after a break, you know, we can have a, you know, I can get some numbers from Jill to look at the budget, but it's not fair to, to have a, this proposal now to not have a chance to look at it and evaluate what, what impact it's going to have on the Tillman. Because my concern is, we, we cut their budget, they, they only have a reserve because of a basic legal sediment, settlement in the past, not because that they're so budget savvy or they have a, you know, big influx of money. And my concern is, if we cut them off at the knees, that we're going to directly impact the lagoon, and I don't want to do that based on this nonsense, so I'd like to look at these numbers.
Yeah, we'll work on getting you those numbers for later in the meeting.
All right. So, I mean, I, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would like to just take this opportunity to point out that the 10% that we're talking about amounts to a whole $1.91 cents per household, per year. $1.91.
Right.
And that's, that's a little, that's a lot of fluff about nothing. $1.91, can't, can't go against my ideology for $1.91 that's going to benefit the people of Palm Bay and the Indian River Lagoon. I find it equally silly, myself. But the previous commissioner from D3 did it for seven years, so what can I say?
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobia, is it possible that you could go back enough years and do a cumulative CPI to do a catch-up, so it wouldn't just all be in the last year, that maybe we could get to these same rates?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It, it would be possible, however, I won't do it.
Okay. Because I know how you're on CPI, I mean.
Just to be absolutely fair, if you go back and listen to the board report, I very clearly expressed that this would be the sentiment that would come out of my office, thus giving Melbourne Tillman heads-up. I came, actually Jill, in budget, came up with a second idea, which I thought was a very good one, which was to put CPI from the 2018 rates up, up to now. So, I, I'm, I'm good with either one. What I'm not good with is when a commissioner, over and over, two, most likely three times, points out a tax or fee increase, I take that pretty seriously, I want to rectify that, and this is the response to that. As soon as I was elected, I met with Melbourne Tillman. Chairwoman Isnardi's husband was on that, he explained the, or still is on that, he talked about the importance of the lack of CPI. That would be a reason why that I made that decision for that 10% increase, which did not make up for the, this CPI. I thought that was a good, fair, and just decision, and when it was pointed out on multiple occasions that that was not correct, I, I chose to rectify that, and this is the justification of that decision.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm just gonna, like, just plead with you on this, just because of the situation, and I know how you are very hesitant ever to make these changes, Commissioner Tobia, but I know, in the wisdom that you exercised last time, you understood the need. You even tried to move it over so it would come to the county commission, and that, that didn't go through the, the state of Florida. So, I, I'm just going to implore you on, request of you on that one. I mean, I do understand your positioning on this, you're pretty consistent on it, but just for the sake of the Melbourne Tillman, I would just ask that maybe you just consider it for just a little while, we're hesitating on this. If, if you would do that, go back to the rollback, for the, for past years, that would do the CPI cumulative to, to make the same amount, and therefore, we could also back out of what you voted on last time, so that that would change, just a request.
Commissioner Lober?
And Commissioner Tobia, I, I've never criticized you, I've never commented on your increasing fees or taxes at any point in time, so I'm, you know, I'm totally separate from anything that may or may not have been said, but from one or more other commissioners. But that said, you know, that in, in my thought, there are only a handful of true core obligations that we have to the folks that live here in Brevard County. Public safety, including law enforcement, firefighting, EMS, mosquito control, infrastructure, obviously, water infrastructure and ground-based infrastructure as well, roads and bridges, things of that nature, and the lagoon. This is one of those where there is an impact on the lagoon, and I, I understand your hesitation to be associated with something that could be viewed as an increase, but if we're ever going to spend more money on anything, it's, it's in one of those core areas of government that I'm the most comfortable doing it, and if you want to cut some other area in the budget down the road, if that resets karma, you know, there's a high likelihood I would support you depending on where you want to cut, but I just don't see this as being the place to cut. And in the, the brief time I've, I've looked at these couple of proposals that were circulated, both of them, even the higher of the two, represents a drop from the current rates, and it's, it's something where, if, if that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be, but I can tell you from my perspective, trying to stay out of any sort of fray, I don't think it's really fair to Melbourne Tillman, and I don't think it's fair to the lagoon, so I'm, I'm not trying to, to denigrate you in any way, I just would encourage you maybe to consider this and think about at least keeping it where it's at, and we can pick it up at the end of the meeting.
And again, I want a little chance to review to see what kind of impact it's going to have on their budget, and I'll just say this, you know, and, and it's silly, it goes back and forth, but when we start making decisions up here that appear to be vindictive because somebody doesn't like what somebody says, I take issue with that. And, you know, Commissioner Tobia's spent a lot of time in the legislature, and it's, it's one thing if you don't view an assessment or a district fee as, as a tax. However, if that's my opinion, if Commissioner Tobia wants to adopt it as his own opinion, or he values my opinion or judgment or truth to that more than his own, I mean, he, he spends a lot of time evaluating these agenda items, and he's been well aware of how Melbourne Tillman, you know, assesses in their district, because I view it as a tax. Obviously, Mr. Tobia didn't when he voted for the 10% increase. I guess he's converting to the, what I call it, because he would like to blame somebody else for that vote, and I apologize to Melbourne Tillman now that the system has to suffer because we've now got to roll back because we're at the mercy of a commissioner who wants to fix an error that he somehow, I uncovered. So, I apologize for that. So, I guess we'll bring this item back, and I'm gonna, I don't, I don't know if you called a question on an item that's been tabled, but I'll, you know, this discussion's not getting anywhere, so I, I want to call it for now, and we'll bring it back later in the meeting after we've had a break, because I have a feeling this meeting's going to be long. Is that okay with commission?
Please. I just wanted to explain to people why a four-to-one vote is, doesn't pass. Melbourne Tillman is a special district, and under that special district, three, you have to have a quorum, so it has to be Districts 3 and District 5 commissioners, and just typically District 4 at the meeting. But my vote means nothing, because if either one of them votes against it, it fails. They both have to vote to pass it for it to be approved. So, in this one case, Commissioner Tobia is the one vote, he gets to say nay, and it's nay. That's just the way it works.
Because one vote can veto the other, no matter what it is, so. All right, we're going to move this. All right, well, that was fun. This is the other non-tax commissioner Tobia voted for, but we'll, we won't talk about that.
Commissioners, we, we are presenting the solid waste rate resolutions. They include the disposal, impact fees, collection, and other various charges at the gate, and certification of the tax rule. The disposal resolution has no increase, the collection, the impact fee resolution has no increase, the impact fee resolution has a slight CPI increase of 1.64%. As per the contract with the Haller Waste Management, it's both in the payment and, and the money that we charge the homeowners, and I want to bring to your attention also in the gate charges, we recently received bids, and there were pretty steep increases on, on, on the part that we received. They were regarding the disposal of mulch, which affects land clearing charges and the disposal of tires. They, we are seeking increases from $23.66 to $40 a ton for land clearing, and from $1.2650 to $1.5450 for tires. Those are due entirely to bids received. They were not RFPs, they were straight bids, it was decided based on price.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Yuri. You've, you've done a lot of good work, and you certainly have your hands full with a lot of garbage, so, but I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Lober. Commissioner Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that, that these increases are totally beyond our control, and it is because the people we use to take these products that we don't process ourselves can arbitrarily raise the price, and we have to pay because there is no other place to take it, which points out why I think it's so important for us to keep the landfill property at 192 that we've spent a lot of money on, because if we sell that 10, 20 years down the road, we're going to be at the mercy of any county that we can find that will take our refuge, refuse, and we'll have to pay whatever price they want, because we have no control. We've lost total control if we sell that property. So, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes four-one. Item I-1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item I-1 is an item brought back from in July. It's asking for board direction for funding for the Brevard Cultural Alliance through the Tourism Development Office. The item was brought up to you in July, the, the Tourism Development Council recommended to fund the, who we'll call the TDC, recommended to fund the Brevard Cultural Alliance at $50,000. The board tabled that, and in the meantime, the Brevard Cultural Alliance had brought a, a proposal of where they would receive the funding from the, as indicated in the ordinance, the funding for the cultural grants for the Atoto, and so we added a option in the board to the original five, so option number five is now, accept the BCA proposal to operate arts and cultural programs under contract with the board using tourism development cult, tax cultural funds, and then direct staff to bring back a proposed contract for the board to consider. Peter and I are up here for any questions.
Okay, I have a lot of cards. Well, not a ton, but a few. Mr. Ridnauer? And after Jim Ridnauer, Lynda Brant?
Okay. Closer. Jim Ridnauer, 4250 Carywood Drive, Melbourne, Florida, 32934, D7679. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I come before you today as chairman of the Brevard Cultural Alliance Board of Directors in support of Option 5 under Unfinished Business Item 1. The BCA proposal lays out how the board of county commissioners will have direct control and oversight, as well as absolute transparency and accountability for all of the county's arts and cultural programs. The BCA, as the county's designated local arts agency, will manage all of the county's arts and cultural programs, just as it has for the past 40 years, however, now being directly accountable to you, the Board of County Commissioners. The fees for service as a grant are exactly the same amount that the BCA has been receiving from the county, but BCA will expand upon their current work, while at the same time, we will review our organization in an effort to find efficiencies, economy of effort, and possible consolidation of staff, so we produce more for the same amount. The proposal opens the, the way for the county to fund all of the arts and cultural programs, as well as the BCA fees for services through the tourism taxes, through the tourism taxes, that is, the 4% allocation for community cultural services. This removes the need for a county to provide funding sourced, sourced from the general, general operating fund. The proposal ups the game for the arts and culture while removing it from the politics and personality issues that have arisen over the past year, and places support for the arts and culture community where it belongs, under direct control of the Board of County Commissioners. This also would eliminate the need for Tourism Development Council's Cultural Marketing Committee, as well as the Art in Public Places Advisory Committee, the savings for the latter, which has been presented prior by Commissioner Tobia, as $7,878, while the Cultural Marketing Committee savings is yet to be determined. In addition to our review of the staff for possible consolidations, we would be revising the BCA bylaws to provide for a county commissioner seat on the BCA Board of Directors, while also possibly looking for county commissioner appointments to same in an effort to be more inclusive of the arts and cultural communities. In sum, if this proposal can be refined for your approval, it would be a new day for the Brevard Cultural Alliance and for the arts and culture communities. I thank you for your time and consideration for our, for the BCA proposal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lynda Brant? And after Lynda, Tom Powers?
Lynda Brant, 180 Alameda Drive, Merritt Island, Florida. I'm here for myself, for arts and culture, and I'm also, I should say, a past chair of the BCA in, I don't even remember when, years ago. A local arts agency engages multiple constituencies, and I think it's important to note that that's across the county and across economic strata. Programs with the Brevard Schools Foundation in cooperation with them, school, programs for at-risk students, after-school programs, hands-on programs with the at-risk students, other constituencies that are exposed to the arts where they have access, where they may not have had access. The visitor component is one component, it's an, of the arts and cultural outreach in the county, it's really critical. One, I've been involved in destination marketing for a long time as well, and I, I know how important it is, but growing new audiences and growing new constituencies and new participants in the arts, new artists, at a very low level, and for those who may not have even considered attending a performance, is important. I think that putting the, a local arts agency on a more independent footing where those programs are valued. programs are valued is important, and I think that that will not be a loss to the tourist development destination marketing programs. And in fact, will lessen the detractions. And I believe that this is, looking at things a new way is the right way to go and give that a shot at that greater level of independence for growing programs that are really focused on wider access to the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? And after Tom, John Fredrickson?
My name's, am I here? My name's Tom Powers. I reside in Indian Harbor Beach. I'm appearing here as both a concerned member of the art community and as a member of the TDC Cultural Programs Committee. I am an artist, founding member of the O'Gallie Arts District, past member of the Bivard Art Museum Board Trustees, and currently Vice Chairman of the Artworks Art Festival, now in its 22nd year. I am very much in favor of the BCA being required to have a contract prior to receiving any further funds from either the county or the TDC. However, I'm very much opposed to the contract being proposed by the BCA. I do support the contract that was prepared by the county attorney and later ratified by the TDC Advisory Board. A couple of my concerns with the BCA proposal are as follows. The BCA wishes to be granted $255,000 to perform various activities for the county. The majority of these activities, they cite as the administration of the cultural grant program currently undertaken to distribute the tourist development tax that is earmarked for the arts community. I think this is a ridiculously high price to pay for that performance activity, especially true when you consider that the TDC Cultural Programs Committee performs the same function at no cost. If the BCA were awarded these funds, it would mean that their compensation would consume 45% of the total funds available for the arts in the coming fiscal year. In a time when funding for the arts is diminishing at all levels, using 45% of the available funds to pay the BCA administration expenses does not make sense and is not art-friendly. The B, number two, the BCA wishes to remove themselves from the oversight of the TDC Advisory Board. I believe such a structure may be in violation of the ordinance that established the tourist development tax and its associated administration. However, it's easy to see why the BCA wants this structure. It is the TDC Advisory Board's proper and persistent oversight of the BCA that has brought the BCA to the recent scrutiny of the county commission, the county attorney, and the county manager. The BCA has been caught in mismanagement and misuse of funds and now wishes to institutionalize their mismanagement and remove themselves from the purview of the very organization that has been responsible for exposing their activities. I am not against the BCA. I believe the organization can make a contribution to the arts community in Bivard. However, I do not believe that has been the case under recent management. I don't disagree that using some small portion of the tourist development tax to fund the cultural grants program is appropriate. However, with the BCA's proposal, proposes to counter everything that, is counter to everything the tourist development tax cultural set aside was intended to accomplish, I suggest that you approve the original contract that was conferred by the county attorney, and I respectfully request in the strongest possible terms that you do not remove the BCA from the oversight of the TDC Advisory Board. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Fredrickson? And after John, Liz Lamb?
Good morning. My name's John Fredrickson. I publish Senior Scene Magazine here in Bivard County. I'm a resident of Melbourne. I am here just in support of the BCA. I don't pretend to know anything specifically about how the budget is managed in this case or how the administration of the BCA is inner workings within the county. However, my relationship with the BCA started in 2006. I have been in a relationship with them where they help me with attaining art for the cover of the magazine. By trade, I am an engineer and really had not appreciated the arts and culture in general. But with this relationship and with the artists I've grown to know throughout the county, this greater relationship, this greater appreciation has fostered. This county is the home for numerous talented artists, national-renowned artists, artists that commercially have provided art for Hallmark cards. Other cities such as Houston have tried to convince our artists to move there, but they decided to remain in Bivard for various reasons. The Cultural Alliance disseminates art throughout the county, enriching the county. People considering moving here can see that. It's a good balance. I know paving roads is important, but the balance with culture is equally somewhat important. Also, the BCA provides a calendar of events that they disseminate throughout the county. Through my experience of callers that I get through my business, this is an important part of the information that the residents are looking for. It also is disseminated to organizations and people outside of the state of Florida, and this is all through the efforts of the BCA. So, in general, I just wanna state my support of the BCA and don't wanna see any action on behalf of the council to diminish their effort here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Lamb? And after Liz, Tim Derotani?
Hello. I'm Liz Lamb, Merritt Island, and I'm on the TDC Cultural Committee. So, first of all, I don't really like speaking in public. I know my father comes over here a lot, but it's my turn because I feel so strongly about this. In a previous meeting, Commissioner Pritchett had said, even without the BCA, that she would want another outside agency to administer the grants. And I heard that because I was sitting here for several hours waiting for my item to come up. And I can say that I'm on the Arts Cultural Committee, and I don't think that it's any different from the Beach Committee that the TDC has, except for the fact that we're only reviewing grants for $150,000, and the Beach Committee is giving out $1 million in grants for the Lagoon. So, what, I don't, you know, I don't understand the reasoning why they're permitted to give out $1 million in funds for the grants directly. They don't have an outside agency helping them do that. So, I was on the Cultural Committee for a couple of years, and then I had to take a one-year break, and then I came back. And what I saw was a continued relationship with the BCA had gotten worse. I honestly was never really comfortable with it. I think it all starts with that relationship. I was never really comfortable asking questions in the meeting. I felt like it was very controlled by the BCA. And then I realized that there was an opportunity for us to just give the money directly to the arts groups, and that this was, this money had an ordinance that was kind of protecting it, but, and I did say that that was only a misuse of funds, and I know that I wrote a letter to, that was in the paper, and later the executive director went back and told the BCA Board that I had said it was an illegal use of funds. So, to me, that's just another example of when I'm trying to communicate and really go up to bat for the arts, and then our words or intentions get misinterpreted by the BCA, specifically the executive director. So, anyway, I think that would be, one of my main things is that to sit here and hear that the Lagoon, you know, the Beach Committee is fully qualified, and then I'm thinking, well, we're fully qualified too. So, and it's the same thing, just a different amount of money. It really is, if you look at it. I don't know if you've ever been to a Cultural Committee meeting, but we do read and review and score all the grants. The only thing we don't do is the administrative part. So, you know, if you feel that we need an agency to do that, I really don't understand that. So, I had a couple of other points. I'm gonna move on, but I will say that I do support the contract written by the county, and I definitely don't support the one by the BCA, because now I'm hearing that they're trying to cut us out completely. Sorry.
Thank you. Tim? And after Tim Derotani, Julie Braga?
Yeah, I'm Tim Derotani, and I'm Chairman of the Tourist Development Council.
Where are you from, Tim?
And I'm from Merritt Island.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm the, I've served as Mayor of Indiatic, I've served as a state representative, and I was served as a senator. I was appointed by three governors to the Florida Council on Arts and Culture, and have served for the past 13 years on that board and as chairman. And I continue. I reviewed the BCA proposal. The contract proposed by the BCA is so vague that it gives the BCA carte blanche to do whatever they want with no limits as to how they spend the tax dollars. Not included in the contract proposed by the BCA is no mention of how to allocate the grants, does not address what part of the tax the BCA funding comes from, does not address the tax collector fee administrative costs of the TDC, does not address the carry forward, does not address the percentage of grants versus administration. The contract proposed by the BCA does not have the following terms which are required by the county: the indemnification provision, the county termination provision, the independent contractors provision, the conflict of interest provision, the verify the public entities crime provision, unauthorized alien worker language. The contract proposed by the BCA has a vague and less restrictive public records provision than the county contract and what's required by law. And they spell out there that they're not going to show you everything, and it's right in their contract. They wanna do exactly what they were doing before. The contract proposed by the BCA allows the BCA to use Bivard County tourist tax dollars for administration in other counties. Under the contract proposed by the county attorney and passed by the TDC Board, all funds must be exclusively to the benefit of Bivard County, and this is not mentioned in the proposal. The, the TDC does not have a problem with the BCA giving out and administering the grants for the cultural groups, provided that they have a minimum of 50% membership of the arts groups on their board. They have zero, zero on their board. They are, they seem to ignore the arts. Yet they talk about all these things that they wanna do for the arts, but they don't do anything except take the money and make it disappear. So, if the commission does not vote today to approve the contract tabled last month, the contract proposed by the county staff and accepted by the TDC must be the starting point for any negotiations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks so much. Julie Braga?
Good morning. I'm Julie Braga, and I am a member of the Cultural TDC Committee. I am also representing the residents in by Marriott in Melbourne, where I'm the General Manager. I'm proud to serve on my first TDC Committee. I do want to make just a couple of points from my first and only meeting that I attended that made the Florida Today, so it was very exciting. In that meeting, that is that question right now, staff, our executive director, Mr. Cranis, said that there would be no additional TDC staff hours available to help in the grant process. So, that means that the committee, which I'm a volunteer member of, would be issuing these grants from the money that we collect as hoteliers, but there's a lot of staff hours implemented, and I believe that's the same thing that the former, the additional committee member, Ms. Lamb, said, that there is no hours for that. So, I'm just, I have a question about that. As we go forward, as a committee, is what we are going to do with that? Is it up to the volunteers that we're supposed to spend? I've actually served on the BCA Grant Committee previously in previous years, and I know it's a lot, a lot of work. There's 30-plus applications that go through the process, so I'm just curious if we're supposed to do that as volunteers. I also wanted to just let you know, Commissioners, that in the room at that meeting, I was the only hotelier, not only on the committee, but in the entire audience. There was no one else there representing tourism as somebody that is every day helping to provide jobs for our employees and has that focus. So, my concern right now as we move forward is, is tourism the primary focus of the TDC right now? And I have to, as a General Manager, be one that looks at my housekeepers in the eyes and determine, tell them if I have work for them or not. So, my interest, I think, is very personal in the sense that I wanna keep my people employed, and I wanna keep our business strong, and I wanna keep tourism as the primary focus on the Space Coast. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, we've been spending a lot of time on this. I'm glad we had a little time to table and to go through it. I probably spent 10 or 15 minutes on the phone with Mr. Derotani. Very enlightening. I was able to spend probably about 20 or 30 minutes with Mr. Ridenhour in my office also. So, I've been trying to figure out what we can do, what we can do, what's the best thing to do for the county and for tourism, and what's gonna make most sense. I think this has gotten very political, and there's a lot of personality issues. So, I started just trying to think through what a good process would be. Again, I have no agenda on this, other than our county and hopefully tourism. So, after thinking through this, I thought, you know, I like what Mr. Ridenhour brought, and we were able to have a long discussion. I almost think that this should, this is gonna be a revamping of the BCA. It's gonna, I like that the BCA understands there are an advisory board. So, I was able to talk to Mr. Ridenhour. They're doing a lot of structure changes as far as staff, and it would be the board's responsibility to figure out where staff goes. I also talked to him. He said that there should be a lot of consolidation. So, I think a lot of that administrative cost, he already mentioned to me, he was wanting to consolidate. Then I went through what the people do, and I liked where he talked about consolidating. But also what the staff does is they actually deliver the art, pick up the art, sell the art. So, there's a service entity that's also involved with this, because my comment was to him was, that's an awful lot of money to manage grant funds. He said, well, no, that's not all that happens. But so, that would be the board's responsibility to pull that together. What I would like to see happen is that BCA Advisory Board becomes directly under the county commission, and that they would negotiate a contract with our county manager Frank Abate. I think this would be a good process. That way, I know that the county's protected, and it would be a good contract at that point. I would like to have all the funds that go to this mission and this board all come from TDC. So, I would like to propose that I know we're not gonna do a transfer, because we talked about that yesterday, I was thinking about a transfer with an earmark, and Jill said all we have to do is to hold on to it in that fund, that the full amount of the 4%, and Jim, you were gonna get that together later, would be what's available for that. Again, this will go to the advisory board, which will come under the Bivard County Commission for approval, and it's a substantial amount of funds. But this way, you know, this will be pulled out as far as that. And Commissioner Tobias, I think from hearing you in the past, I agree with you, time to get it totally off of the general fund, and this would all come from the TDC funds, even on this budget. So, that amount that you keep bringing up that you're uncomfortable with those projects, we could move from this budget immediately. And then I also agree, Commissioner Tobias, and thank you for tabling the item. We could do away with the Arts in Public Places Board and the TDC Cultural Board. Therefore, we just removed two boards with staff time, because it's gonna become an advisory board where they're gonna be responsible with the contract through the county manager, completely under the Board of County Commissioners. And then that way, I think the TDC will have that 96% that they'll be managing, and this 4% will stay with the board, because I think maybe this might be a good move for the county commission to be watching over, and it solves the contract problem. I have a little bit of heartburn with all the conflict about the contract with them, and it's the contract with them, and it should have been under contract. I'm glad we caught it. But I think the TDC's gonna have to work to making sure that we're getting contracts and we're giving large amounts of money out also, because that very day that discussion came up, the next day, the TDC approved a $250,000 grant to the Playhouse without a contract. Not that I'm not in favor of it, I probably am, but if it's good for one, it's gotta be good for both. So, I, I think we got a lot of work to do, and again, these are volunteer people, and they are amazing people, and it's a good thing. And as, as far as what all the groups are doing, I, I commend you for volunteering in the community to do these things, but this is gonna be my motion, Madam Chair, is that the advisory board, the, the BCA, directly contracts with the county manager. This becomes an advisory board to the County Commission, and that we will be the ones approving the final amounts of money going in and out with all the funding directly coming from the TDC and no longer any money coming from the general fund, and that the two boards would be, um, removed from the county budget.
Okay. Uh, I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, but I have other people that want to speak. Do we wanna wait?
It doesn't matter. I'm just hoping they got it all.
Okay, I think, I think we got it.
Okay.
Commissioner Loeb?
Okay, so this is a, an interesting one. I figure this would be a fun agenda item. The crux of it is, I've spoken with folks with the BCA several times. I've heard the, the concerns that have been coming from the, the TDC members with respect to this and other constituents as well. There are things that I've heard that I like, there are things that I've heard that I don't like. One of the things I liked hearing today from Mr. Ridenhour was that he wants to see us exercise direct control and oversight and, and have the BCA directly accountable to the County Commission. I think that the first step in, in going in that direction is ensuring that we have a good contract. Uh, I would like to see the BCA survive in a, in a reasonable way, where they can do good work and continue to do good things for the county. But some of the concerns that were identified by Mr. Deritany and, and other concerns that were brought to my attention previously caused me to believe that there would be a benefit in having someone from the TDC Cultural Subcommittee work with Mr. Abate, and I, I don't think that's a bad idea on Commissioner Pritchett's part, to have him essentially be the point person for the county in negotiating with the BCA, but I think it would help to have someone, frankly, I think there's a lot of bad blood between Mr. Deritany and some of the folks in the BCA, and I, I think he would probably also agree that Ms. Lamb, for instance, is probably far more pleasant than he is when it comes to these things. So, I would, I would suggest if we don't have a better idea, perhaps if Ms. Lamb is willing to, to serve on that as well and to work with Mr. Abate, in trying to, to firm up some of these concerns that are out there, we can have it brought back to the county in a, in a better state than it's at now. I think that we are in a position where we've got something. Uh, I think that the county attorney may need to work it over as well. I leave that to Mr. Abate, and if the board is willing, Ms. Lamb as well, and Mr. Ridenhour, whoever the BCA chooses to put on. Um, one of the concerns that I do have, and my, my information at this point, is that Mr. Levine has formally resigned. Uh, I saw that he was going to resign. I may be wrong, but as I understand it now, he's formally resigned. So, one of the items, and I'm not trying to micromanage, but since, you know, the BCA is willing to have this come under the purview of the County Commission, I, I do want to make sure that in any search for a, an executive director, whoever is working on the replacement, the county have a, a dog in that process as well. Uh, I think having Mr. Abate involved in that and possibly a TDC member, and I, I really don't care who on the TDC is involved, but I think we need to have someone from the TDC involved so that we don't end up with exactly the same sort of personality conflicts that caused us to be here in the first place. I think that's better for BCA, it's better for TDC, and it's certainly better for the County Commission and the folks that live and work in Brevard County as a whole. So, I, I'm not gonna second, um, most of what I, most of what I like with Commissioner Pritchett's item, uh, I, I don't have a problem with, but I think there are portions that I think could be tweaked, for instance, including someone with the TDC, having them serve in, in, in that capacity as well. I would second it if that modification were made alternatively at the end of the comment. I'll, I'll probably be making my own motion if the, the modification isn't made to that first motion.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you for all the wonderful volunteers on the TDC. Uh, we talked about this not being personal, and it was a little bit, in all honesty, in my office. Uh, one of the first things I did, uh, when I got elected was try to remove Senator Deritany, uh, from, uh, the appointment. We don't see I die on, on many things, however, uh, it's, uh, great to see his passion on this, and, and he's never let that down, and I think, uh, he's my advisor on this one, and I think he's hit the, the nail on the head. Um, that would be option one. Uh, a great deal of time has been in this. We have an advisory board. Um, Ms. Lamb, uh, thank you so much for coming up here. I'd never put two and two together. Your father is a treasure. I didn't know that you guys, uh, were related. I have a great deal, uh, of confidence as, as this group, uh, working together. Uh, the contract has been vetted by the County Attorney's Office. It has all the provisions that we're lacking, um, from the BCA contract, whether the executive director is there or not there. I don't think that that changes the weaknesses in the contract. So, while I like many of the items that Commissioner Pritchett, uh, put forth, uh, my vote is going to be right along the lines with, uh, the TDC recommendation, which would be, uh, item one, to accept the contract and funding amounts recommended by the TDC. I think it's useless to make more advisory boards or funnel stuff through the county manager who has plenty of, uh, items on his plate. I think we should rely on our volunteers who work extremely hard and, uh, to, to, to make those determinations as to what's best for the arts community. Again, this will not be cutting one dime from the arts community. This is just saying the folks, uh, on the TDC are better apt to make those decisions than, um, what the BCA could otherwise do. So, um, after, you know, should there not be a, uh, should there not, I know there's a motion on the table. It sounds like there's a second one, uh, the third one. Should those two not get, uh, a majority would be option number one.
Commissioner Smith? You got something totally different? I'm just teasing you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, maybe I do, maybe I don't. I want to disclose that I also spoke with, uh, Mr. Ridenhour and Mr. Deritany and picked their brains, got some information from them. Uh, I find them both, uh, very educated in this area. Maybe on many areas that they're completely opposite in their opinions, but they're both passionate about this. I like the idea of the county being in charge, um, because I'm concerned that, one of my concerns is that the arts, as was expressed up here, there's no real provision for the arts. Um, got a lot of cultural impetus there, but not a lot for the arts. So, I don't know how to reconcile that. So, I'm not sure that we don't need to have some kind of a combination of these unless we're restricted to these options.
Yes, it's like a race for the button. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, well, just, just on that note, if it becomes under ours as advisory board, we will be appointing people to this board. And I also think it might be, um, an advantage for us to have one of the county commissioners be on there as a liaison, so that we're able to, to put into place what we feel is important for our, all of our constituents from this board. So, you know, as, as far as each of us appointing you, we could point who we wanted to, to the board. Um, but I, I just think it would just solve a lot of problems, and you don't have one layer here, another layer here, all the conflict of trying to get everything done. Not that they're all not wonderful people, but the, the, the great vast amount of personalities are, are kinda tough. So, I think maybe if we just take this four percent, move this over here, leave the TDC with the rest of the ninety-six percent to focus on as far as, you know, tourism-driven projects. Um, because again, this wasn't that much amount of money, but, um, it seems significant moving forward as, as population increases. So, I, I just think this might be a good solution as far as what Commissioner Loeb just said. You know, we're, we're able to directly impact who's on that board because it'll be our board now. Uh, we, one of us could sit on it, and then we will have direct communication as far as what we feel our constituents want with the board that's already totally focused on nothing but arts and culture. So, we don't have to reinvent, plus we get rid of two boards. Right now, we're not creating a new one. It's the same board. It's just gonna maybe transition as time goes on to our appointees. So, we're actually reducing two boards, keeping one in place, and we're just reformatting, so it's just a clean, direct path to us, the contracts with the county manager, so we know everything's fine, and that we will also know that we are comfortable with how the funds are being spent.
Commissioner Loeb?
I, I don't necessarily have a, a huge objection to that, but I think there's a condition precedent in my mind to getting to a point where we do that. I think the first thing is getting the contract taken care of, and then we can move on to that concern. So, what, what I would propose is that we, we look at option six, which is essentially something not listed in the prior five, and direct Frank, Frank Abate, our county manager, to work with. And I, if it's not Ms. Lamb, someone else from the TDC, preferably from the same Subcommittee, to formulate something, because my goal ideally would be to have everyone come back, not where they're smiling and singing kumbaya, but at least where they're acceptable, uh, as to, to where things are left off, so that we don't have this big unknown moving forward. And at that point, I, I think it would probably be a little better to move in the direction that you're talking about, but I, I do have some concerns about the contract, and I think now is the best possible time to get those addressed, not after we take additional action. So, I can, I can make a motion if the...
There's already a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
And I don't know if she's gonna change it. So, Commissioner Pritchett?
My only caveat to that, sir, is I think that should be the BCA with Frank right now, and see if we could get a working contract, because they're gonna be our advisory board. So, my, my proposal is that this just becomes between them and us. Not that I don't respect the TDC. Mr. Deritany, you shaking your head isn't gonna affect me right now, just like your phone call didn't. But I, I think that this, this is, this is our better route. This is where I, I'm gonna be, be moving towards. So, I think if, if you would, sir, we go ahead and allow them to get together and see if our county manager can get a contract that is ours, that we're comfortable with, and that, that we like, and that we think is appropriate. And I, I think this will now be kind of our responsibility, and I, I think that's appropriate, too.
Do you wanna talk, or you want, okay?
By the hell means.
I'll just say, I, I was really torn on this. You know, I, I've, after talking, I've talked to Mr. Deritany several times, like, over the last several months, probably even before we had big shifts in the board change, and there's been issues with the BCA for a long time. And I don't think anybody would argue that some of the work that they do is wonderful. They do great work. What I take issue with is now, and I understand the intent, because we, we would have better oversight. I take issue, or the only issue I have with, with the BCA coming under us is now, now we've chosen an organization that's gonna manage the arts. So, what if any organization should apply to do that? Why are we only allowing the BCA to, to essentially bid on that service if we're gonna have a grant or allow a special agency or company to do it? I'm just saying, that's one argument. Another argument is, I don't want anything else to do. I think we've got enough of a budget to manage, and I think to put us in control and power of TDC funding, the TDC should manage the TDC fund. Now, they obviously had problems in the past. They've had issues that we were learning about now that were going on for a long time before we've even had a membership and stuff that they're finding out. I think, you know, I think the BCA, again, provides a valuable service, but I think we need to, we need to find a way to let the TDC still manage it, in my opinion, you know? Oversight, auditing, maybe the county does, uses our auditor to audit them, if, if that's the case. But if they're such an organization that they don't fix the issues they have, which it appears that they have maybe fixed the issue that they've had, um, then maybe the TDC won't use them. But I think that, I think the arts and culture and stuff needs to stay under the, the umbrella of the TDC. And I was, I was almost sold on the idea of bringing it, because I thought, well, then we can make sure they're spending the dollars right, but it's pretty egotistical of us if we can't use an auditor to do the same. That's just my opinion. Commissioner Pritchett?
That's, that's a really good opinion. Um, and I agree with you on that, except there's been so much conflict. And it's been really hard to get everybody to sit down and come to the table. The, um, doing this, it's, it's not, it's still gonna be an advisory board, still giving recommendations, but instead of them going to the TDC, which we're not able to get contract stuff done, it'll just come through Frank, and, and, and we'll be good with it. Um, so, I, I don't know. That's just something to consider with that. I, I just think, just from listening to the meetings, and, and I, it, it just seems tough to me. I, I had heartburn over the cost of the administrative, if Mr. Ridenhour agreed with that, and he's, he's working on those things too, which I think the board is gonna have to step up and figure out how they're gonna supply these services, because they actually go deliver things. I mean, they're spending hours doing this, and there's some things that they, they do need to consolidate, because they do manage grant writing, so they're getting grants. So, there is quite a services entity's doing, and I went through, you know, line by line with them, because I wanted to make sure people were earning these funds, because it, it got my attention. So, um, I, I, I don't know. I just thought this might be a good solution for right now, but just because of the, the strong personality conflicts. And as far as, you know, the TDC, they've, they, I, it's, it's a great entity, a lot of money, but they're working through an audit, little bit of an audit struggle right now, too. Mr. Cranis, you're doing a great job with that. So, none of these things are perfect. So, I, I just think, you know, you're talking four percent of it. I think it might be a good fix for this right now, and, um, let the cultures do the cultures. I found out Sarasota has a $2 million arts and culture budget, and we've only been running a, a small amount here. And again, I, I'm not one that's really into all this stuff, but I know it's important, because all the millennials are moving to the places where they have all these types of concepts, and, and goodness knows, we're trying to attract workforce. And I know it's important, and the return on investment, from what I've been reading through some of these pamphlets, you know, you guys, TDC's been doing a good job, arts has been doing a good job. So, there is definitely product, productivity coming from these entities. People are doing a great job. I just think that moving forward right now, this might be a good way to get rid of some of the, uh, conflict, because nobody's in agreement right now. And the, um, I actually got a copy, you guys, of all the people that serve on this board, if y'all want them. They're all wonderful, qualified people. And again, we can move them around all we want to, because, you know, we'll be naming people to the board. But these are, you know, people that are very, you know, focused on it, just like the TDC people. They're all volunteers, and they're spending their time. So, you know, maybe there needs to be some different type of revamp with this advisory board, but, you know, we'll be able to help give some direction to what we think might need changed also.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just real briefly, one of the things that I neglected to state earlier, you know, going back to this whole personality conflict thing, and if you feel like saying something, I'm not telling you you can't say it. Say what you feel like saying, but I would just suggest that folks, if they really do want this to work out the right way in the long run, resist the urge to denigrate the other association with the media. Uh, I know that they'll be happy to, to print whatever you say that's negative, but we're, we're trying to make this work so that everyone is at least content in the end, and I think running to, whether it's the paper or Space Coast Daily or, or online, and just nuking the other party is not gonna be productive for anyone. So, it, it would make our jobs easier. It would probably make the, the end result better for everyone if we just try to avoid that. I'm far from certain as to how this is gonna go today. Uh, I think there are a couple options that are, you know, at least somewhat palatable to me up here. Um, but I, I would just suggest if this doesn't end the way that you, you think it ought to today, it doesn't sound like any, anything is going to be irreversible or in stone, uh, even with, well, with all of the proposals, I think there's more work to be done. So, I would just say let the process work itself out, and then if you feel unhappy at that point, then, you know, go ahead and, and let the folks know that you care to let know. But I would really allow this to work itself out before you start trying to, to spin it in a way that's gonna damage the other party.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier in the week, I called Mr. Cranis, and I had spoken to Mr. Ridenhour and, um, Jim Leisenfeld as well. And I asked the three of them if they could get together and come up with some common ground. So, Mr. Cranis, can I ask you to, to weigh in on that? And did you, and how did that work out? And what are your thoughts regarding this?
Oh, yes, sir.
Not to put you on the spot.
All right, if I comment? Thank you.
Yes.
So, uh, we did not have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Ridenhour, but, uh, Mr. Leisenfeld and I did go through the contract. Um, each of us have gone through it. We've identified a number of issues that have already been discussed, so I, and I think I had mentioned, um, on, in our phone conversation, that I had some things that I wasn't completely comfortable with in, in the contract itself. So, um, I, I don't wanna say we need to go back to zero. I just think we need to go back to a version of the contract that was better defined by the county originally, um, and incorporate the direction of the board in terms of the amount of money to be awarded, because our, the original contract had $50,000, and if, uh, the board wants to increase that amount, then, you know, it'd be helpful to have that direction as far as, um, what that amount should be. Um, you know, my, my overall thought is, and as Commissioner Pritchett so rightfully pointed out, you know, we, we're going through our audit right now, and I am totally committed to transparency and accountability, and that's what the audit's helping us get to, and I'm excited about that. excited about that. I think BCA should have that same level of transparency and accountability. And I don't believe in the past that that's been necessarily the case completely, because there wasn't a contract. There was no way to hold them to that accountability. So whether it be, you know, Mr. Abate, or Mr. Leisenfeld and I, working with BCA, or if there was somebody from the TDC that would be assigned as well to that, have that conversation, I'd, you know, totally open to that. But it would be helpful to have a little bit more direction from the board in terms of the amount of money that they're talking about. Is it the full? It's actually 10% of the first two pennies is how the ordinance describes it. It does come out to 4%, but it's, just to stick to that, is it that full 10% of the first two pennies, or is it something different? And what happens as the TDT grows? You know, is that built into it? Are there other uses for those funds that could be used for marketing in our organization, which, you know, I could have some ideas on that as well. So just wanted to throw that out, as far as just having some better input on that.
Thank you, sir. I guess my problem right now is I see benefits to several of these propositions. And I'm not sure that I want to come down wholly on any one of them. I wouldn't be opposed if Mr. Leisenfeld and Mr. Cranis sat down and came up with their version, or an option that they could give us, if the board would be interested in doing that. Because they've got the insight. They've got all the numbers right in front of them. Because I agree with you, Madam Chair, we already have enough to do. When I first heard the proposal to allow us to be in charge, I thought that would be great, but...
Because of oversight and audit ability.
Right, right. But I think we can get oversight without us being on the part of the decision-making. So that would be my recommendation, but you guys have to...
How would you, would it interest any of you, like, obviously, if, because I think what people are maybe not confused, but people are assuming that, you know, the BCA has to do all arts and culture. Like, if we don't have a BCA, we don't have any arts and culture. Or if we do not allow, or if we don't take over the BCA, that they're not going to be able to do their arts in public places. Because that's what we see the most, right? I mean, if the TDC is a cultural organization, their cultural board manages the grants or the funds, it would be nothing, the BCA could still exist. But if the BCA applies for those funds, like other agencies, because in reality, I mean, if you look at the board, I mean, these aren't artists. These aren't cultural community. And that was like a red flag for me from a long time ago. But it doesn't mean that the BCA can't ask for X amount of dollars every year. Because if they can justify usage of those funds and show through their proof to the cultural committee, or to the TDC as a whole, if it makes people feel more comfortable, because it's ultimately going to come to us anyway. You know what I mean? Just like we approve the projects, right? So if it comes to them, and they say, okay, well, the BCA, now you've justified the use of this $225,000 or whatever, because the BCA has been able to say, this is what we're going to do, then they've at least impressed their board enough that they're going to manage the money properly. Does that make sense? And then they can choose, if they, you know, they give them proposals, or they say, you know what, you're paying too much admin costs, they can choose not to fund them. But I think we need to get out of this mindset, as much as we love the BCA, and they do some great work, we need to get out of the mindset that we are ultimately responsible to them, because they are an organization of their own. You know what I mean? There's the TDC, and the BCA is an organization of itself. Like I said, we like what they do, and they do some great projects, and they do some awesome things, and we like the arts in public places, and they have nice people that work there. However, they're still their own organization. Make sense?
Well, it's a good point.
I don't know. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask, Mr. Cranis?
Sure.
I think you're looking for some direction. I think you'd probably have to watch this meeting four times to get anything out of it. So let me see if I can try to boil this down. You're probably looking for whether to go with the contract proposed by the BCA, or the contract proposed by the TDC, the one that has been vetted by the county attorney. Is that one of the two questions that you're trying to get out of this today?
I think the question is, the amount of...
That was the second one, yes.
The amount of the contract recommended by the BCA is, you know, directional. But as far as working with that contract itself, I see a lot of problems with that contract.
I see problems with that, too. But so you're looking for whether to go with a problematic contract, or the one that has been vetted. You need that as a direction, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Don't tell us where you stand on that one, but I appreciate the hint. And then the second one is whether or not to go with the TDC recommendation of $50,000, or the BCA recommendation of $255,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
So though we may want to kick this down the can, we probably should direct staff, one way or another, to let them know whether to work with one of those two contracts, or one of those two amounts, or another one. But I think it's unfair to ask staff to make a policy decision. I certainly, I see Jim pointing at me over there. So, Madam Chair, can I, he's...
Yeah.
Sorry for interrupting, Commissioner. What BCA would like is, they're calling it the 4%, but it would be 10% of the first two pennies, not 255,000. And, you know, that's something like 640,000. There'd be some subtraction for the tax collector fee, the holdback, you know, statutory holdback, and then how tourism subtracts out their administration costs across the funds.
So it's substantially more than...
They were asking for more than 255.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you for that justification. So again, you know, just, I think we should give staff, you know, a little direction. Where I stand on that, I think I was clear, but I'll say it again, is to, with Mr. Cranis pointing out of all the, and Senator Derritani pointing out all the problems with the BCA contract, I would certainly be with the TDC contract, the one that has been vetted. And I was not comfortable with 255. It sounds like it's substantially more. So I am comfortable with the $50,000 that was suggested by the TDC. Whatever we come to, I think, fairness to staff, we should give them direction in one way or another on those two items, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
That's a lot of information. Commissioner Tobias, I hear you on that. I'm thinking this would probably have to be a new contract. It's a new day. So I think everything that you guys have been dealing with, it substantially needs substantial changes. So I agree with that altogether. I think we're going to have to determine how we're going to structure this at this point. I think this is our conversation a little bit, so then we can give them direction, and we know how much we're willing to spend on arts and culture. That's going to be the amount regardless of whether it's divided up into more than one entity or not. That's the amount that's coming in for these types of projects. We just got to frame how we think it should be. As far as the boards, TDC and BCA, they're both advisory boards under the county commission. That doesn't change this. There's no board that's independently out there on their own. Like you said, Commissioner, is Nardi, so that it's just still, those boards still report to us, and we still make final decisions on what we're doing as far as budgets and funding, which is always our responsibility. So I think what we need to do is come to some consensus of how we want to frame this, and who we want responsible for making decisions. I hear you on, as far as the TDC on the cultural side of keeping a dog in the fight. Maybe there's a way to merge them. I don't know how we're going to do that, or if that's an idea. But I think we have got four boards right now, with all have opinions. They're all advisory boards. So I think this might be an opportunity for us to figure something out. I actually like your idea of maybe letting Mr. Leisenfeld, and Mr. Cranis, and Frank, you guys maybe get together, and come up with what you think would be a good idea for a contract, or maybe even give us recommendations of what you would think be the strength for us moving forward. And that would keep a TDC with Mr. Cranis in there, and then our county in here, of what you think would be the best thing for our county moving forward, as far as this division of how funds are. So I actually liked your thought on that, maybe moving forward. It might be nine difference. I think Frank wanted to jump in, ma'am.
Oh, please.
You've got to hit your button, Frank, and then I'll call on you.
Well, okay, thank you. Yeah. So we're clear on this, too, and I've been just trying to listen intently. Mr. Leisenfeld and Mr. Cranis both work for the county manager, right? So when we're talking about who's going to be negotiating, the three of us are a team. So tourism, he's working as part of the tourism office, not the TDC, which is your advisory board, but he's reporting to me. And so I am listening to both, you know, what all the commissioners are saying. Whatever negotiation path and direction that you choose to give us, we'll follow that, and we will all three work together. So whether it was directed at me, or Mr. Leisenfeld, and Mr. Cranis, the three of us will be working together to put together a contract, taking into account, from a budgetary perspective, the items from an administrative, you know, what we have to make adjustments to whatever was initially proposed. And we will do that, and make sure that all the contract provisions that need to be in there are there. I guess the most basic decision, which you guys have been toying with, is, is the TDC to stay involved in that, or will it come through BCA? And that's the most fundamental question. Soon as we get that, and the board agrees on that, then we will put the contract together, in a way, working with that agency, and bring it back to the board for your consideration. So I think we understand that as a staff, and I think that's where the board's taking us.
And I'm going to pop in here, because if I wait till everybody finishes, I'll never get a chance to talk at all. Maybe one suggestion, and this is something I thought of before we all started talking about it, is, given the change in leadership with the BCA, and the instability of that, and given the several months or last year of tension, maybe perhaps we go with this first suggestion of the original contract you had with BCA, or the original put-forward contract with BCA. And then after this year, we can restructure, if need be. At least they can move forward and know what the heck they're doing, instead of waiting on us to try to figure it out, because it's obvious that most of us are on different, have a different idea. But if I was to vote on it, like, right now, rather than have staff come back with something else, and they're going to be hesitant to give us the real opinion, because they shouldn't have an opinion on it. They should just be giving us information. So, I mean, if there's three votes to go ahead with the $50,000 this year, and then we can modify next year, we could, if it's the commission's desire to bring it in-house, you know, under the board, that's another thing altogether. But I don't know if I could get there, given the information I've gotten. But at least this year, they can move forward with what they're doing, and they can plan their budget. But I think, again, we have to get out of this idea that we're obligated to the BCA, more so than we are to the TDC. I think we should be obligated to the arts and culture community. You know, we want to make sure that they're being serviced. So I think this moves us forward, at least for the next 12 months. So, Commissioner Loeb?
So I think we've pretty well fleshed out what the issues are, at least in a broad macro sense. So it seems like there are basically three options at this point. We have the D1 proposal, we have Commissioner Tobias' proposal, and then I think I'm probably closer to the middle of the two of them. And I think, you know, at this point, we just ought to see who gets seconds, and how the vote goes. But, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and I think, in a meeting, if we're at a point where there isn't something that's hammered out, that's to everyone's satisfaction, I would be right where the two of you are right now. But I don't know that I'm there yet. I'd like to give it one more round. I know that it's taking a lot of time on the commission, but I think it's important enough that we give it one more shot.
I'm just over it.
And I understand. I'm pretty close to getting over it myself. But I think we give it one more round, with Mr. Abate negotiating with BCA, with the input of Ms. Lamb, again, assuming she's willing to do it. And if we don't get something reasonable, I'm just going to go with the TDC suggestion at the next meeting.
Commissioner Pritchett? Oh, that was... Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm with you, Commissioner Loeb. I'm kind of between the two. And so I think that, for me, if we could just decide on how much money we want to give them today, whether it's going to be 50,000, or 150,000, or 250, whatever, and then let our county staff come up with how that works with the original contract.
With the contract that was given by the TDC? Yeah.
If I may?
Commissioner Loeb?
You know, I understand the concern with respect to that, but I don't know that I want to put that in stone yet, because it depends on what's negotiated in the contract. I can tell you, though, I'm not in favor of giving them 600 and something thousand dollars. That's way out of line with what I'm willing to go for. You know, whether it's, you know, 2-something, or a slightly higher 2-something number, I'm less concerned about that. But 6-something is definitely off the table. If you want to put a max cap on it, I'm happy to do that. But I don't know that I'm willing to say, you know, 205 versus 265 versus, you know, any other number. If you want to cap it at the higher, I don't recall if it was 265 or what the exact number was, but I'm happy to cap it at that and move it forward.
I don't have a number in mind.
You want to just, let's round up and say 275, cap it at that, that it is a max?
What do you think, Mr. Tobias?
I'm going to fall back on the recommendation of our advisory board. I think that's why we have an advisory board, and I don't think anyone's in a better position than, again, Mr. Derritani and I do not see eye to eye, but...
So what number is that? Refresh my memory.
That is option number one, I believe, which is 50,000. I did not come up with that, to be clear.
Yeah, it wasn't his.
I did not come up with that number. That was a recommendation from the TDC. I did not amend it one iota. I would like, let me be clear, I'd like to see zero. If I had it, it would be absolute zero. But I'm going with the recommendation of the TDC. Is it 100? 100, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, if that's the TDC recommendation, my notes say 50,000. If it's 100,000, I'm willing to go with the TDC recommendation.
How much did they have last year to work with?
I think we can dump that over to Mr. Leisenfeld.
If you don't mind, Commissioners. The TDC recommended $50,000 at their May meeting. Last year, the Bavard Cultural Alliance received 205,000 from the Tourism Development Office for Administration. And then they also received $50,000 from the General Fund for Administration of Grant Programs for their administration. Then they received 100,000 from the tourism tax for the cultural grant program, and 30,000 from General Fund for the cultural grant program. That 130,000 was just the pass-through. So the grant total they received was 255.
Can I call Derritani up? Would you mind?
You're the chair, absolutely.
I mean, but you're talking. I don't want to interrupt.
No, no, I was taking, I was taking, I see what the issue, yes, that would be okay. I see what the issue is.
Do you mind coming up?
It's $50,000 from General Fund, and $50,000 from TDC. I wouldn't mind if all 100,000 dollars came from TDC. That would then free up $50,000 to do...
I'm with you on that as well.
No, sorry.
As I said in my comments, I'm not opposed to the BCA administering the grants. And now that there's a, you know, it's going to be changing, and hopefully there'll be people on the, from the artists, from the art groups. That's like the Coca Village Playhouse, and the King Center, and all of the others, which none of them are on there now. And I would be, I wouldn't be opposed to increasing the 50,000. We did that because, you know, it was, you know, they weren't going to be doing the grants. But if they did the grants, and it moved forward, you could go up, you know...
Would you be opposed if we, and I know I said I wanted to make a decision so we could move forward, but bringing it back to the TDC, and you coming back with a recommendation for us as far as with that direction, if the majority of us at least want...
We could do that.
You to still manage the arts?
They're meeting tomorrow, Thursday, the committee is, and they could come up with a higher figure, and with a couple of other things, like, you know, putting people on there from the arts community, and from the cultural community.
Because honestly, I'd rather you vet this problem, like, where there is problems. And in a perfect world, at least from my perspective, anyway, would be that you still manage the arts and culture within the TDC.
I've been in the arts my whole life, okay? And so when I got on here, and I'm going to be gone in two months, or three months, so it doesn't really matter, you know, the personality-wise and such. There'll be new people there. I would just like to get this thing squared away, where the arts are getting the proper amount of money that they deserve. And if we increased the, I wouldn't be opposed to you increasing the funds here today, you know, and let them, BCA is a good group. It just got sidetracked with the leadership, that's all. And hopefully, they'll have good leadership in the future. And I'm an optimist in that regard, so. So, yeah, if you wanted to do a number today, it would be fine. You know, just whatever you choose.
I don't know what order we were in. Commissioner Tobias?
Just a question for Senator Derritani.
Yeah.
No matter how we do this, just to be clear, since you sit on this, make the recommendations to us, you're not making, you have no plans to decrease funding to the arts. This is just...
We're going to take whatever...
We're going to take whatever money we save in these other areas, and quite frankly, the TDC was taking 100,000 and spending it on, on advertising, which they can take out of their regular marketing budget. That money is going back to the arts, where it should be. And then we're taking the, the money that we weren't really giving out, we were spending on marketing for the people that would apply for it, and then, and then the TDC would keep it. I'm opposed to that, too. So, it wasn't just the BCA, I was opposed to the way the TDC was operating on, on, as far as the arts go, because they were cheating the arts community out of the dollars that were allocated for them in your ordinance, that was originally passed in 1986. And I, and I want that money, I want, instead of, instead of 100 and some thousand dollars going out, I wanted, we were advocating for 500,000. And we can, we can still do that with an increase in giving them, you know, money, and letting them do one grant program. But it's really simple to do, and it doesn't cost that much money to implement that grant program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Derritany just gave me a little bit more comfort with, with some things you just said. Commissioner Lober, I, I, you know, after listening to everybody's comments, the only reason I threw out that full amount, because it's a full amount of the arts, that's what's going to be spent anyway. So, we were just trying to figure out where to divvy it up. I would be comfortable with what Commissioner Isnardi said, and we go ahead and cap it at the 275 right now, and give people time, because we can always pull back with what we want. And again, then that way, we can just get some kind of balance on how we're spending money in the, in the arts. But you just gave me some comfort with some confidence.
I was trying to do that when I called you on the phone.
Well...
And, because I, you know, I wanted you to know that I'm not opposing the BCA. You know, I've been involved with it, you know, for, while I lived here for over 70 some years, so... But, but I want the arts to do well, I want the money to go to the Coca Village Playhouse, to the Titusville Playhouse. I mean, I support them, and it's because of, because of me being on the Florida Arts Council, that the, that the Titusville Playhouse got money in five years in a row. I helped them write their, their grants, and I helped them, and, and, and got them approved with a higher rating so that they could, the legislature would pass them. And with all of the others, that's what, that's what I've been doing. You know, I, I'm through making money, I'm interested in helping my community, that's all.
Yeah. So, anyways, I, I thank you for that. So, I, I think that might be a good solution right now, so we can work this out. I do like a lot of the changes going on with the BCA right now. And so, I, I, I think from listening to everybody's conversations, this might be a good starting point right now. Because I also like the fact that the county manager is going to be working on that contract, because it needs a little bit of love, too.
So...
So, I, I think I, if you're willing to make that motion, I'll withdraw mine.
My, my motion, if you want, what it would be, unless you want me to tweak it in some way, it would be to direct the county manager to work with BCA, presumably Mr. Rittenhour, along with Ms. Lamb, to negotiate a contract with a maximum cap of 275,000, to come back at their earliest convenience to another commission meeting.
Is she the chair of the cultural board in, in the TDC?
I don't know if she's chair, but I know, I don't believe she's chair, but she's on it.
She, she's on the committee, and...
Do you have a chair of the committee? Are we getting out of order by doing that?
No, no, whatever the commission can always do, anything they want.
She's...
She was up here and spoke on it, was passionate about it. And I, I mean, if we got to use someone else in the...
No, I, I'm fine with that, I'm just making sure we, I don't get myself in a place here politically.
They're only, I think the, the committee's meeting tomorrow, I mean, Thursday. And what, what they wanted to do was ensure that, that we, that the county staff was involved with a search committee for the BCA, as well as somebody from the TDC, and, as well as whoever else they wanted to appoint. And that they also, and that they, they also put a minimum of 50% on, on the Board of Directors from the, from the cultural commi, community.
Well, I, I'm getting a little hopeful, I'm hearing a lot of kindness here starting to...
If it would make you feel better, too, I don't, I don't mind. I think, is it Andrea Young that's our, our chair for that subcommittee?
I believe so.
We could put her on instead, I'm, I'm fine anyway.
I have nothing with Ms. Lamb either, I'm just trying to keep us out of a...
Let's stick with Ms. Lamb, then.
Yeah, she's very fair.
Unless you're concerned, I agree.
Okay.
Did the court get that for the motion?
Commissioner Tobias?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Where, where are you as far as, what's your input, with what Commissioner Lober suggested?
I, I respect that. I, I, however, am confident in, and I understand I'm not going to win this one, but I'm confident in, in the, the work that the TDC has done with this. I, I don't think it matters, the administrative costs. I, I would rather those administrative costs be borne by the TDC. Senator Derritany has the same wish that I think the rest of us on this board does, and that's to use those dollars to promote art as best as possible. If he's telling us that the volunteers are willing to do this, thus saving us administrative dollars, and they can do it for $50,000, plus the other 50, 100, instead of 275, I think that's 175,000 that could be used to promote more art festivals at no additional cost to, to taxpayers. I...
And if they're administering the grant program, it's nothing for BCA to apply for a grant from the cultural arts program, correct?
That would be, that would be, that would be acceptable with me, I, I don't...
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, so BCA doesn't have to be out of existence because they're not getting a direct flow of cash?
I, you know, my concern is not with the existence of the BCA, my concern is with the tax dollars. And I, I have a volunteer organization of professionals, you heard Senator Derritany. Again, I'm on the opposite end of the spectrum as this gentleman, and I, I am saying that I, we...
He's not as awful as he seems, I promise.
No, he's a wonderful individual, just politically.
He's pretty impassioned, he's pretty impassioned.
Absolutely, absolutely. He's, he's working to spend the dollars in as best way possible to bring as much arts... He, he, he and his volunteers are willing to do the exact same work that the BCA is, is doing, thus providing more opportunity for arts in Brevard County. Again, without spending any more tax resources. So, I, I, I respect that, you know, the Commissioner Lober's opinion on that, that 275 is better than the 600,000. I, I guess that's a small victory. But, but again, I would, my confidence is in with, with Councilwoman Andrea Young, Senator Derritany, Ms. Lamb, I have...
I think that's where I'm a little confused, because the chair, which was Senator Derritany, Senator Mayor, whatever you prefer...
Yeah, we have quite a few top, the honorable.
Yes, the honorable, and, and passionate. He said that, you know, like, he's open to, so it's like, it's now, the circumstances have changed. The BCA lost their director, and he's, and, and the senator says, you know, he doesn't, he's open, he's not against it. So, now I'm not getting that firm, that firm position from the TDC.
Okay, I see what you're saying, and I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So, you're saying if Senator Derritany...
Has changed his mind.
Has changed his mind, and he's willing to provide more resources, if he thinks that providing those resources, that the BCA serves an important function, a partial important, important function, and that's the recommendation? I, I'll, I'll support, I'll support him on that. Absolutely, I'll support him on that.
I mean, are you comfortable with, with that, or without it going back to their board, for their board to discuss it? I don't want this to go back, I want to make a decision like yesterday, or last month. However, I want to make the, the most sound decision, that is the recommendation of the TDC. You know?
I don't know that we've had a second.
Sorry, sir?
I don't know that we've had a second.
Can we...
Did you make a motion?
Can we ask Senator Derritany at 275, or whatever that number is?
I mean, if he believes that his board's going to be okay with it?
And that's, that's a cap, it doesn't mean it has to be 275. If it's less than that, we just have a, a cap, there's no floor, but there is a cap.
Okay, this, so this is just giving them the opportunity to come back to us with an additional recommendation of what that new, what that new amount would be, up to 200?
Up to that, it's not just doing that, it's essentially encouraging them to, to negotiate with that as the maximum cap. I hope that it doesn't come back at 275.
Yeah, I would...
But then it gives their board a chance to vet it.
And I would ask that they try to focus that money from the TDC, and not from the general fund.
I, I would agree.
Correct. They got it.
And are we going to use county staff to...
I believe it contemplated...
To make sure our contract's sound, I'm sure.
Yeah, contemplated having Mr. Abate handle it, and if he chooses to delegate that within his office, I certainly have every, every, every reason to believe he's able to do that, along with Ms. Lamb.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I second his motion.
Okay.
His motion, his motion.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you in the lineup. All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, did you guys get the motion okay?
I see smiles, that's a good sign.
It's a little confusing. Second by Commissioner Pritchett, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, so you have your direction, Senator Mayor, Honorable Derritany, Chair. You have your direction to take it back to your board. Awesome, thank you. All right, so it is 12:20. It's been a few hours without even a five-minute break, so we're going to take a short break, so I can get some numbers from our budget. And so, if anybody needs to go to the bathroom or have a quick bite, so 15, 20 minutes, guys, you think?
Yeah, 15's good.
15 minutes.